All right, we will be calling the meeting to order. 1.2 Pledge of Allegiance, can I have Ms. Rosenbloom lead us in the pledge?
Right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every team and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rosenbloom. 1.3 Approval of Agenda. Move.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Alexander, second by Ms. Medina. Vote please. Motion passes. 2.0 Special Presentations, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Goodwin.
Well, thank you President Zabaios. Good evening, my name is Mary Rhone Goodwin and I'm the Director of Communications and Community Relations. At this time, I'd like to invite our Board members to take their places in front of the dais, and I'd like to invite the members of Executive Cabinet to take their places near the ramp here. We are preparing to honor the championship boys water polo team from San Bernardino High School. So let me tell you a little bit about their feat. Their league record is eight and one, and in November, the Cardinal Water Polo Team beat Montclair High School nine to eight to earn the Division VI CIF Southern Section Championship. This is something that San Bernardino High had not accomplished in three decades. Now I would like to invite San Bernardino High School Principal Anna Sosa to please come forward and take her place beside Superintendent Mauricio Ariano. All right, audience, before I call each student athlete by name, I'm going to ask that you hold your applause until the very end so that each athlete may hear their name clearly announced. First up is Pablo Alonso Juarez. No. Okay. David Gomez de la Rosa. David Heredia. Jose Hernandez. Ivan Herrera. Alejandro Lopez. Angel Lopez. Charles Madrid. Christian Madrid. Austin Martinez. Luis Montiel. You're gonna stay here, we're for a photo, okay? Gilberto Rodriguez. Isaiah Rodriguez. Dylan Soltero. And last but not least, Randy Soltero. It is now my distinct pleasure to recognize the adults who made it possible for our students to shine. When I call your name, please come forward. We have Manager Haven Argonda. Manager Alina Inda. Equipment Manager Mario Pressler. We have Athletic Advisor John Hinkleman. Assistant Coach Joshua Bryant. Head Coach Jason Mendoza. And AD Pat Mills. At this time, what we are going to do is line you folks up for a photo op, so please follow the directions of my photographer Karina Borsak. All right, give these students and their coaches a big round of applause, please hold. Please hold, students, please hold, hang on. We don't want you to go anywhere because we have a very special guest joining us this evening. Audience, please put your hands together to welcome San Bernardino County 5th District Supervisor Joe Baca Jr., who is here to make a very special presentation. Supervisor Baca.
Thank you, Ms. Rhone, honorable Board Member, Superintendent, guests, family, it's great to be here, and I'm very, very excited for these young boys that have won a CIF championship, and I can, yeah, give it up for CIF champs, a great thing. And as a former high school softball coach that had an opportunity to compete in CIF championships, I had never had the opportunity to win a CIF championship, had the opportunity to go through the playoffs, but just think about the hard work and commitment that these young boys and coaches have put, and I want to thank the coaches for their investment and giving it their time. People don't realize, coaches give a lot of their time, they get a stipend, but you know what, more importantly, they commit to themselves, it's really about the cause and the kids. And I had the opportunity to watch one of their playoff games at San G, a beautiful facility, by the way, great facility, and I was just very proud and exciting to watch them play, but just think about, a lot of things had to go right, they had to work hard, they had to compete, they had to be in position to win, they had to have good grades to be there because CIF requires academics, so this is a great group of kids, and I'm very, very excited and happy for them, and just think, it's more than them winning a CIF championship, it's really about them bringing pride to the San Bernardino High School, bringing pride to the San Bernardino School District, but also putting the city of San Bernardino on the map, and having great champions and great things, absolutely, on the map. And that's important, I mean, just think about the great success we've had come from this community, it's something that we should all be proud of, and we should be very proud of these young men who have done great things, but for me, it's personal for me because I love athletics, and by the way, I've got like 2,000 emails from them asking for a donation, so they've been, they've been asking me, so... Who sent the email, was that you? I don't know. But my point is, so I want to thank them and congratulate them, we have a certificate that we want to present to them, but more importantly, we also have a check for $1,000 for the San Bernardino High School Water Polo. And we're very proud of you, on behalf of the County Board of Supervisors, good luck, and let's root for a back-to-back, what do you think, back-to-back? Let's bring it home again next year. Who would have thought, San Bernardino High School Water Polo? Were Water Polo School? Yeah, absolutely. So on behalf of the County Board of Supervisors, let's give it up for the high school, we have a check for $1,000 to present.
We're gonna pause for a quick photo. All right, now we have one more announcement while we're up here. Raise your hand if you're Charles Madrid. Charles Madrid is San Bernardino High School's valedictorian, let's give him a round of applause. Congratulations, student athletes, right here in front of you this evening. Thank you very much, Supervisor Baca, thank you for always supporting our students. Now, let us continue our celebrations and recognitions. I will now turn the mic over to our Communications Manager, Maria Garcia.
Thank you. Tonight, the Board of Education will recognize a district community partner for their support along with students, parents, and employees who are recipients of tonight's outstanding awards. This evening, we are proud to honor an organization that has made an impact on the lives of many youth in our community, Project Fighting Chance. Founded with the vision of empowering young people through mentorship, discipline, and the art of boxing, Project Fighting Chance goes far beyond the ring. They provide a safe space for children and teens to grow, learn, and develop skills like self-respect and resilience that will serve them for a lifetime. One of their most notable boxers is SBCUSD-Aligned and USA Boxing Champion Terrible Terry Washington. And we're very fortunate to have Terry with us. It is with deep gratitude that we present Project Fighting Chance with the Outstanding Community Partner Award. Please join me in welcoming CEO Mr. Terry Boykins to accept this honor.
Mr. Boykins, I invite you to the podium to give brief remarks. Community, Board, President, Superintendent, we want to say thank you. We want you to know that when Project Fighting Chance puts on a uniform, we go to work. When we step on your school campuses for EXL, we go to work. When we step into the ring to compete and represent the Dino, we go to work. And I like to put a shout out to the individuals that have been with us along this journey. Shout out to Ann Pearson, EXL Director, San Bernardino Parks and Recreation for their support being at Ruben Campos Community Center, having the ability to really be available to young people after school. Dr. Rodriguez for always being there from the time we basically came on this journey, she has always been there, always been willing to come over to the facility, see what we were doing, make sure that we were in need of anything, she would have a chance, but she also would make sure that we were being accountable to what we were doing in this district. I also like to pay tribute to Dr. Gwen Doddy Rogers, who really gave us a leg to stand on in terms of what the after-school program should be about, and what they were looking for in terms of the providers. And without question, Dr. Margaret Hill, who had an incredible relationship with Terry Washington. If it had not been for her, that young man may not have been the success that he is, by being able to stay in school and come to school, and see that there was a future with getting an education as well as being an athlete. And so we want to definitely, without a question, give that shout out to Dr. Margaret Hill. And then also too, to the parents who every day trust us to maintain the village, ensure that we are responsible for the safety and the well-being of these young people that come to Ruben Campos Community Center. Each year, for the past eight years, Project Fighting Chance has achieved over 1,500 hours serving at Promise Youth After School through boxing training, fitness, local and national competitions, arts enrichment, and chess programs. With a focus on reducing childhood violence, aggression, and trauma, plus food insecurity and obesity, Project Fighting Chance is dedicated to instilling positive affirmations and life-success teachings to school-aged youth after school, Monday through Friday, from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM at the Ruben Campos Community Center here in San Bernardino. We are a humble organization, but yet and still must demand from our talented team of staff and EXL staff site coaches excellence and accountability. As they are without question some of the best in the game, and we definitely mean that, that these are some of the best coaches that are working with your youth and youthness community with regards to boxing fitness and enrichment. And as we expect excellence and accountability from them, we invite you, the Board, and the community to expect the same standards from us every day and every hour we engage youth. Always remember, boxing is what we do, community is who we are. Community who's we are, and please join the fight to help stop the trauma, and help us continue moving youth in this community by having them tell themselves that I am a champion. Please pledge your support to Project Fighting Chance as we pursue much-needed funds for our July Summer 2025 programs, and you can do that by visiting Stop the Trauma. Thank you greatly for honoring Project Fighting Chance and its dedicated staff with such a distinguished award, and we appreciate this community, we appreciate this district, we appreciate the leadership, thank you for allowing us to be the champions at this moment in supporting youth in this community. Thank you, everyone.
It is now time to present tonight's outstanding Student, Parent, and Employee Awards, which allows the Board of Education to honor deserving students for demonstrating excellence in academics, athletics, fine arts, and citizenship. This also lends an opportunity to recognize parents, volunteers, and employees who have gone above and beyond in support of their schools and departments. Tonight's honorees will receive a Certificate of Appreciation from our Board of Education and a certificate from San Bernardino County Supervisor Joe Baca Jr. Student and Parent Award winners will receive free tickets for their family to attend the San Bernardino Symphony, and our student honorees will also receive a district bumper sticker, pen, and yard sign on their way out. Audience, these presentations will take about 20 minutes total, and I kindly ask that you return to your seats after receiving your award as a courtesy to our fellow honorees. With that in mind, when your name is called, would you and your immediate family please come forward to accept your award by walking down the ramp where you see the balloons? You will be greeted by Superintendent Mr. Mauricio Arellano, the Board of Education, and your principal. Please pause in the center for a photo. After your photo, please finish shaking hands with the Board members and use the walkway to my right to return to your seat. Our photographer will demonstrate. Okay, our first school recognitions are from Salinas Elementary School. At this time, I'd like to invite Principal Ramon Velasco to join us at the front. Audience, please put your hands together for Madison Campton. Madison is a 5th grader in Jennifer Isai's class. Madison is very dedicated and focused. This provides her a strong foundation for academic success and good citizenship. She is a good role model for her peers and must make her parents Denise Baca and Richie Campton very proud. In fact, you make us all proud. Great job, Madison. Our first outstanding parent award winner is Jessica Ruiz Montes. Jessica is the mother of two Salinas students and is very involved in their educational life. She also supports every classroom and teacher at Salinas in any way that she can. She volunteers to beautify and decorate the school. She takes time to recognize educators and staff for special events and so much more. Thank you and congratulations, Jessica. We had a few staff members who could not be with us, so this concludes the recognition for our Salinas Elementary School. Audience, let's give them a big round of applause. Now let's keep that energy going by giving a big round of applause as we prepare to welcome Thompson Elementary School and Principal Vilma Sandoval. Principal Sandoval is making her way forward and greeting Executive Cabinet. Audience, please put your hands together and help me welcome Flor Chaviendo Castillo. Flor is an outstanding 2nd grader in Carrie Love Lance class where she excels in all areas. Flor is a consistent role model for the three character traits, integrity, kindness, and honesty. She is very self-motivated and loves learning. She is an active learner, always engaged, and loves academic challenges. We are so proud to honor Flor this evening, let's give her a round of applause. Now please put your hands together and help me welcome outstanding student Caleb Sanchez. Caleb is a 4th grader in Veronica Vidana's class. Caleb is an exceptional example of perseverance, kindness, leadership, and significant growth. He demonstrates perseverance by working diligently to overcome personal and academic challenges. He approaches new tasks with a positive attitude even when they're challenging. He inspires other students to be a model student, and we're all so proud of you, Caleb. Now please welcome outstanding parent Raylina Figueroa. Raylina has made a significant difference at Thompson through her consistent dedication and support. She is always willing to help and volunteer in her children's classrooms and provide calm, patient, and kind guidance to all students. She actively reinforces school expectations and is a valuable and positive presence. Thank you, Raylina, for giving students your time and care. Audience, now please help me welcome our next honoree, recreational aide Norma Bylon. Norma truly embodies the district's values in everything she does. She creates a safe and welcoming space where all students feel included and supported. Her kindness and respect for everyone make her a joy to work with, and she's always ready to collaborate with staff to keep things running smoothly. No matter the challenge, she handles it with professionalism and a smile. Great job, Norma. Our final Thompson honoree is Teacher Melissa Ramirez. Melissa creates an engaging supportive environment where every- Melissa creates an engaging supportive environment where every student feels valued and motivated. Her collaboration, professionalism, resilience, and innovative teaching inspire both students and colleagues, while her appreciation for diversity and pride in her work make her an outstanding representative of our district's mission and vision. Thank you, Melissa. Thank you for helping us honor our Thompson students, volunteers, and staff. Let's give them another round of applause. Now it is my pleasure to welcome Pacuma K eight School Vice Principal Dawn Simpson. Principal Dr. Dana Jamison could not be here with us this evening, but she sends her congratulations to all of Pacuma's outstanding award winners. Now we're going to welcome seventh grader John Bond as he and his family make their way forward. John is a student in Deborah Elliott's class and is being recognized for his outstanding dedication and growth all this year. He has increased his commitment to his studies, which have led to significant positive changes, reflected in improved citizenship and notable academic progress. He has scored in the seventy-second percentile on his science NWEA test. Congratulations, John. Next, please put your hands together as we welcome first grader Kennedy Williams. Kennedy Williams is in the first grade. Her cheerful and bright personality lights up the Pacuma campus every single day. Kennedy's constant smile and welcoming nature make everyone feel valued and appreciated. Energetic and charming, Kennedy is not only a joy to have around, but also a dedicated helper and exemplary student. Thank you, Kennedy, for brightening each school day with your positivity and charm. Let's give her another round of applause. Please welcome outstanding volunteer Yolanda Mendoza as she makes her way forward. Yolanda provided not only her time and experience, but also decorations, treats, and a warm smile to make Pacuma's book fair a success despite not having power for two whole days. Pacuma could not have done it without you, Yolanda. We appreciate your willingness to support our community. Thank you very much. Now, please help me welcome our next honoree, Campus Security Officer Miguel Ortiz. Miguel is also known by his call sign Baker twenty-two. He helps in creating a safe and secure environment where students are able to learn and thrive. Miguel exemplifies the power of building meaningful relationships. His professionalism and respect of students and staff alike have earned him admiration from all corners of the school. We are deeply grateful to his dedication and service. Let's give them another round of applause. Now it's time to welcome Santiago Rodriguez. As Pacuma's P teacher and new ASB advisor, Santiago has seamlessly stepped into this role, fostering incredible school spirit and creating opportunities for students to feel welcomed and connected. Through events like dances, pep rallies, and other activities, Santiago dedicates countless hours to ensuring the campus is a vibrant and inclusive place. We are so proud to celebrate Santiago's well-deserved recognition. Let's hear it one more time for all these outstanding Pacuma honorees. Now our final outstanding achievement award school is San Bernardino High School. The home of the Cardinals, and Principal Ana Sosa is already coming forward. So now please welcome Isabella Ascorra, a senior in Olivia Parker's class. Isabella's charisma combined with a genuine passion for helping others makes her a natural leader. Over the past two years, she has been an invaluable member of the Principal Student Advisory Council. Through her thoughtful insight and proactive approach, she has contributed to enhancing the overall experience for both students and faculty. Thank you, Isabella. We wish you much luck in your future. Congratulations, Isabella. Now help me welcome Senior Pablo Alonso Juárez. Pablo maintains a three-point-eight total GPA while also being involved in Air Force JROTC and engineering pathways at San Bernardino High School. Pablo has been an integral part of helping the San Bernardino High School water polo and wrestling teams advance to CIF this year and has continuously taken leadership roles, not only in athletics, but also as a member of the Associated Student Body. Pablo, we wish you good luck in your journey to become an orthopedic surgeon. And now Wendy McEwen. Welcome Wendy. She has been engaged in helping her student athlete son George be successful at SBHS, but she also shows concern for all students as a member of the school site council, assisting in the WASC accreditation process, as a member of the mom squad that supports the varsity boys' basketball team and so much more. Wendy deserves to be recognized because she represents the very best, just like SBHS. And now we're going to welcome our next honoree, athletic equipment attendant Mario Presler. Mario's attention to detail and commitment to safety have ensured the athletic programs operate smoothly and students are always prepared. He fosters an environment of teamwork and support, offering a helping hand whenever needed. Thank you, Mario, for your commitment to SBHS and our community. Let's hear it for Mario. And now it's time to announce our final outstanding achievement award honoree for this evening, math teacher Linda Nelson. Linda demonstrates professionalism and great passion for supporting her students. She contributes positively to SBHS as a math department chair and leadership team member. She keeps up to date with instructional practices and initiatives to better support her colleagues. Thank you, Linda, for being a highly motivated and committed teacher. Let's give all our Cardinals a round of applause. Thank you, members of the board, superintendent, and executive cabinet. Would you kindly return to your seats? And thank you to our gracious audience for showing your support to our fellow honorees. Sending a special thank you to Fifth District San Bernardino County Supervisor Joe Baca Junior and the San Bernardino Symphony Orchestra for supporting this evening's honorees. Students, please remember to pick up your yard sign from our team member Vicky Wood in the back before you leave the community room. And this now concludes this evening's special presentations. At this time, I'll turn the floor over to Board President Myra Ceballos. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and once again, congratulations to all the recipients and their families for coming out tonight. All right, moving to two-point-three resolution recognition march as arts education month here, month, youth art, education month, youth art month. I'm going to go ahead and ask Ms. Villa Albazo to read it for us, please.
Whereas visual and performing arts have a unique ability to connect us to our history, heritage, and culture. And whereas art education, which includes both the visual and the performing arts, is a vital part of quality basic education, providing a balanced education for all students. And whereas Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District joins California in recognizing arts education as an essential part of basic education for all students, pre-kindergarten through grade twelve. And whereas artistic literacy is defined as the ability to understand, create, perform, and present or produce art, as well as respond and connect through the arts, and is a core part of art education framework. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education and the San Bernardino City Unified School District joins California Department of Education, a recognition march as art education month, youth art month, and encourages all schools in the district to celebrate the arts with meaningful student activities and programs that demonstrates learning and understanding of the visual and performing arts.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Ms. Medina, second by Ms. Alexander. Can I get a vote, please? And then Ms. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Ms. Villa Albazo? And Ms. Abaniz?
Aye.
Motion carries. Two-point-four resolution and recognition of Women's History Month and International Women's Day. Can I go ahead and ask Ms. Abaniz to read that for us, please?
Whereas Women's History Month began as a local celebration of Women's History Week in nineteen-seventy-eight in Santa Rosa, California. And whereas now the entire month of March is dedicated to recognizing women and spreading awareness of the importance of women in the history of the United States and worldwide. And whereas March eighth and International Women's Day, a day of collective globalism activism and celebration. And whereas women have led efforts to secure equal opportunities for women, the emancipation movement, labor movement, civil rights movements, and other causes to create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas in the U.S., suffrages marched and were arrested for supporting women's rights to vote and ultimately achieve the enactment of the Nineteenth Amendment to the Constitution of the United States. And whereas in our own community across the United States and worldwide, women have been and continue to be leaders in the forefront of social change efforts, business, science, government, math, art, literature, music, film, athletics, and more. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District joins others around the state, the state, the nation, and the world in recognizing March as Women's History Month and March eighth, twenty-twenty-five, as International Women's Day, and directs district teachers to promote learning activities that encourage students to reflect on the many notable contributions that women have made. Thank you.
Can I get a motion, please?
Moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Ms. Medina. Ms. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Ms. Villa Albazo?
Aye.
Ms. Abaniz?
Aye.
Motion carries. Three-point-oh, public comments. Three-point-one, receive public comments. This is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the board on items not on the agenda and within their subject matter jurisdictions, such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, or fiscal matters. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will be provided no more than thirty minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. And first up, we have Ms. Maria Valdez. Can you go ahead and press the button on the mic right in front of you?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Superintendent, and members of the community. I stand before you today, not just as a concerned member of the district, but as an advocate for the students who have been directly impacted by the mismanagement of the Arroyo Valley High School pool renovation. Construction on the pool began in June twenty-twenty-four, yet from the very start, there was a glaring oversight, a lack of proper security measures to protect the site. No fencing, no deterrence, no safeguards against vandalism. What began with broken lights soon escalated into repeated acts of destruction, yet still nothing was done to secure the area. The results? A year without a pool. An entire polo season was lost. Countless practices were canceled because there was simply nowhere for these dedicated athletes to train. And yet, despite every obstacle, these boys persevered. Excuse me. They practiced whenever and wherever they could, pushed through every challenge, and still managed to reach the semifinals. They lost by one point. One point. And I can't help but wonder if they had been given the proper facilities, if they had been given the same opportunities as their competitors, how far they could have gone. What's even more frustrating is that the athletic director took the initiative to go to the county to find out what needed to be done to move this project forward, only to be told that it was up to the district. And yet, here we are, months later with no resolution. I have to ask, why hasn't this been addressed? Why did it take an entire year, an entire lost season, before this concern would be taken serious? And now, we are heading into swim season, and still, there is no pool to practice in. My own grandson initially told me he wasn't going to participate in this season's swim team. After everything that happened, I don't blame him. But his loyalty to the team, to the school, and to Coach Gonzalez, he changed his mind. That kind of dedication deserves to be rewarded, not to be met with more struggles. There are many more concerns I have, yet I know I only have a few minutes. But here's what I have to say, our seniors will not be able to practice swim for their last year in their own pool. They have put in years of hard work, only to have their final season disrupted. On top of that, money has been taken from the athletic budget to pay for buses just to get them to practice in back. That money could have been spent on other sports benefiting so many student athletes. Instead, it was used to fix a problem that should never have existed in the first place. And let's talk about what this meant to our students personally. They were coming home at ridiculous hours, sometimes as late as nine o'clock in the evening. Because they were doing everything they could to commit to their sport, even with the challenges they faced. This is unacceptable. These students should not have to sacrifice their time, their energy, and even their well-being just to be able to play the sport that they love. So I want answers. Will these students be forced to struggle again just to find a pool to practice in? Will they be left scrambling for resources while other schools have everything they need? This is not just a pool. It's about equity, fairness, about responsibility, about doing the right thing by these athletes who have already given so much. It's time to take responsibility, to correct these failures, and to commit to doing better for our students. Their dedication should be matched by our commitment to providing them with the facilities they need to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do have four other public comments, I believe, on the same topic. But before I move to those, I wanted to allow Mr. Koenig the opportunity to provide us with an update on this.
Yes, thank you. And I apologize that this happened. However, it's not a matter of mismanagement. There is a process that we must follow as a school institution that involves the Division of State Architects as well as county approvals. So working with both entities to ensure that the pool is safe and allowable for our students to participate is critical. We are working with the county right as we speak. And in the next couple of days, we should have approval for access to our pool at Arroyo Valley High School. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that update. And I will, Mr. Tillman?
Thank you very much. I know it's not agenda, so I can't say a lot. But I will say that I know for a fact that the board has 100% commitment to ensuring that you guys have that pool available. I was actually on the school board and instigated to talk about building a Royal Valley as a school. So, and at the time we built the school, the state law didn't allow for the matching bond fund to be used to build a pool or the theater. So the district used general fund money to ensure that we had a pool and theater because we wanted to make sure that that site was just as good as any other site throughout the district. And we haven't wavered since then. So you have 100% commitment? I heard you talk about funding going away. Mr. Koenig, we can make sure that whatever funding that was used for busing, that we backfill that money so that they don't lose that. I'm sure we can take care of that, right?
Yes, sir. I'll address that.
So, well, we're here 100% in support of your swim team, and I commend you. But I will say, ma'am, our students staying late at night for sports is not unusual. I did it when I was school. I saw my brother come home late. We did it late for the band. I'm not saying you do it if you don't have to, but we all know as athletes, we go above and beyond. And that's why we have so much success in this district. So I want to thank you all and congratulate you for your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tillman. Superintendent?
So, Mr. Koenig, just for the sake of the audience, the project is completed, correct?
Yes, sir. The gates, the fencing, that is all completed. The pool has been repaired and updated. It is just a matter of having official approval and sign off so that we can release the pool to our students.
We're not able to open that pool until we get that approval, correct?
Yes, sir. That is accurate.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I just have one question on that. When do we anticipate or expect that approval to come through?
In speaking with our facilities director, that should be within the next couple of days. I'll keep the board updated, and as soon as I find out, promptly notify you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Up next, we have Isaías Martinez and Bryant Mesa.
Hello. Hello, everyone. My name is Isaías Martinez. I'm the senior team captain of the Arroyo Valley Swim Team. I was also a team member for the water polo team. I played for four seasons for water polo. This is my fourth season of swim. As she mentioned, our pool facilities have basically been non-existent. We haven't had a pool. It's been like around almost a year without our own pool. And how are we gonna practice without our own pool? I don't get how we're gonna, are we gonna sacrifice our own dignity to have to ask other schools just to borrow them and be at the mercy of them where they bear no responsibility to help us? They don't have to help us. They don't have to accept our request. The only school that has accepted our current request for the swim season this year is San Bernardino High School. And from my understanding, it has something to do with like county building plans or what you said, that like approval. And I hope you guys know why. It feels like the district or the county doesn't really take the time to respect us as a team or as a school to understand and address our concerns with timeliness. Because that is the most important thing, because our season isn't gonna last forever. It's only around four months per season. And we need that time to practice. We can't have forever just to practice for a season that's gonna be gone. And I'll give you a comparison to help you understand how poor it's been managed. The new Sanji High School pool took 18 months to become completed from start to finish and open to the school's team. Construction for the new fence in my school started in June, and access to the pool deck is still restricted. It has been nine months since the pool has been restricted. Nine months with no way to practice, without essentially being at the mercy of other schools, other athletic directors, other coaches with their practice times and everything with their own commitments. And like, we can't really force them to ask us to help them. We can't force them to make them help us. We were a semifinalist for CIF, but I am not asking for applause nor recognition. That belongs to San Bernardino as they are the champions. I'm asking for respect from the district and county to our school and its facilities. Moving on, I'd also like to point out that we, as students and faculty, have to sacrifice more of our time when using another facility. We didn't start our practice until at least four, and sometimes even at five. Where normally, we would start at like, get out of school at 3:35. We start at four. And we wouldn't get home from around 7:30 to around nine if practice was a little bit longer. And this is like, almost more than an hour wasted on traveling on downtime every single day. With academically rigorous classes, clubs, or jobs, many of us don't have the luxury to spend that hour on basically doing nothing. With what I and others are going to say, we hope to make you understand the cost of inefficiency and pressure whoever is responsible to right their wrongs, whether it be this school board or another party, to finally let us use our own pool. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, I have Ms. Lydia Alatorre de Canciola.
Buenas tardes.
We need, I'm sorry, we need interpretation.
Buenas tardes. Una disculpa que no hablo inglés correctamente. Mi niña está en el de water polo y ahora en el de natación. Y ha sido muy difícil para ellos, no referente a mi niña. Tengo tres niños en la high school de Arroyo. Y la verdad ha sido muy difícil porque llegan tarde. Tiene que hacer tareas después de que llegan de práctica. Y en la mañana tienen que estar temprano para regresar a la escuela. Es muy difícil que su mente se concentre en la escuela cuando hay tanta pérdida de tiempo.
Lydia Alatorre de Canciola?
Hello, my name is Lydia Alatorre de Canciola. I have students who practice water polo and swim. I have three students at Arroyo Valley. It's really hard for them to, you know, take those practices, be there out late, and then coming back from those practices so late, having to be up so early the next day for school.
Les agradeceríamos que nos apoyen en dejarlos practicar en su casa. Porque los niños se sienten muy inconformes o disgusto al estar usando otra casa que no es la de ellos.
So we'd appreciate it if they could practice at their homeschool because they feel very uncomfortable having to go out and practice somewhere else.
Y yo recalco, y ya lo habíamos platicado, lo que nos decía la señora. Gastan demasiado dinero en esos bases que van, los llevan y los traen. Ayúdenos, por favor. Los niños necesitan su alberca y practicar. Es la única forma de que tengamos buenos estudiantes y buenos atletas.
Well, like the lady earlier had said, you know, we do need to talk about this and help us back them up and appreciate them. We do need that money for buses, you know, it's coming and going to practices. They really do need their own pool to do their own practices at their home pool or school. And it's also, this is better for the students.
De antemano, yo pienso que sí nos van a ayudar y gracias. Y vamos a estar esperando con ansias ese apoyo que necesitamos para nuestros hijos.
So thank you very much. I know, and I'm giving you my thanks beforehand because I know we're gonna get that support from you guys for our students.
Thank you for everything. Thank you for everything. Thank you.
Gracias. Thank you. Up next, I have Ms. Monica López Alonso.
This thing on? Okay. All right. Good evening, board. My name is Monica López Alonso. I am a dual-language educator for this district. And just as all of you, I believe in making hope happen for all of our scholars. Today, however, I stand before you as a parent, asking you to do just that, make hope happen. My daughter's a sophomore at Arroyo Valley High School. She is a member and co-captain of both the girls' water polo and swim team. Early on in the school year, the pool at Arroyo High was vandalized, if you've heard, and deemed unfit for use. Despite this setback, our scholars persevered and continued to practice arduously at other sites. This didn't come without consequence. I can speak for myself and my family when I tell you that practice days were longer than ever, which in turn affected homework, time, projects, and sleep. This was because in order to get some practice in the water, scholars were required to take a bus to whichever site had its pool available on a particular day. Although we are grateful for the opportunity to practice at other sites, this put our athletes at a disadvantage due to travel time cutting into practice time. If the pool at Arroyo were available, practice time could be maximized, and students could be home earlier to hit those books. Eventually, after a few months, the pool was fixed for a little bit. But then, to help prevent further vandalism, a fence was finally built around it. However, the fence has not been approved for use, as we've heard, and therefore neither has the pool. I'm here to ask you to honor your commitment to the aquatics athletes at Arroyo Valley High School and make hope happen by getting the fence and the pool up to code, approved and open as soon as possible. I thank you for your time and consideration and continued commitment to our SBCUSD scholars. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And then up next, I have Mr. Peter Gonzalez.
So just so you know, I was by the pool today. It's still not on. The fence isn't fixed. There has to be a self-closing mechanism. It still hasn't been installed. And I was there today. Just so you guys know. And they told me the pool's gonna be done in November. We're still here. So I just want to say, good evening, board. My name is Peter Gonzalez. I've been the coach at Arroyo Valley for 13 years. I'd like to thank each and every one of you, first of all, because I know that you all have continuous effort to help the city and our marvelous students. I know how it is for your efforts to go unnoticed, and I hope you all know that you are making an impact on each and every student, and I please hope that you continue the great work that you guys are doing. I'm here tonight because I have a serious concern. We have not had a pool since June 2024, as you heard earlier. My A.D. told me it was gonna take two months and be ready by the first day of school. Once August came, we were ready to start our season. We were told we still cannot practice and have to go other places. We then started going to different pools. I tried to find as many pools that would accommodate us. I tried my best. I called in favors. I asked everyone everywhere, and to anybody watching, thank you so much for allowing us to use your pool. As the season progressed, we were told that we were going to be able to have a home game by the end of our season. Telling my students this made me happy and gave hope. But as we continued, we were not able to do so. There were times where I couldn't have practice, and there was nowhere available, and we'd have to cancel or find other means. As a coach, I felt I was failing my team because not being able to come up with places to practice and canceling practice when they really want to do their best. I felt like a failure because I could not give them what they deserved. And I had to see their sad faces when I told them we will not be able to continue our season in our pool. When the season was coming to an end, we were told the pool should be done by November. I was excited and told my team that if we had made at least quarterfinals and had a home game, we should be able to actually have it at our pool. However, as time progressed, we were then again told that the pool will not be done for the season and for the seniors who have not been there or who have been there for four years, we're not gonna be able to have a pool and be able to play a game in their own pool. I understand that some things are out of the control, and I just want the board to know and hopefully find a solution. There's so much more I'd like to tell, but respecting everyone's time, I'm gonna stop here. Thank you for listening, and please, let's make a hope happen, and thank you again for your time.
Thank you. And I have a quick question before you leave. When does the season start?
We practice in the summer.
It starts in the summer?
We practice as soon as school's over. We have dead period, and then we start right away. But we weren't able to because we didn't have a pool at the time. So I would say, starting usually right after 4th of July is when we start.
And when does the season end?
Depending on how we do, your season can go usually to about Halloween. I think we had a CF game on Halloween, if I'm not mistaken. It was our first round. And so, and then it goes to win or lose, sorry.
Okay, so it's about the first three, four months of the school year typically?
Yeah, of the, I wanna say- Yeah, of the, I want to say of school actually starting, but like I said, we do practice before or try to.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
And again, I just want to apologize to all of the students at Arroyo and the families as well. Um, I personally didn't know. I, I don't know if my colleagues knew. Um, I wish that we would have known sooner. Maybe we would have helped, you know, um, problem solve a little bit sooner as well. But as you've heard, um, it should be ready within the next couple of days. If it's not, please feel free to reach back out. Thank you. Up next, we have Les.
Mike Chat. How y'all doing this afternoon? I'm a community member. I'm not with an organization. It's just me by myself. I kind of grew up around this area. My grandma used to run a halfway house right next to Jones's Elementary School before you guys built that school. It was a halfway house right next to it. And I always felt that it was kind of weird anyway why a school got built next to a halfway house, but that's just my personal opinion. But, um, I came here to find out when are you guys gonna have school police monitor? The back of that school because it's a lot, it's too much going on. You got prostitutes selling themselves in front of an elementary school. We sit here and say that we want, um, healthy communities and we want these children to grow. But they're sitting there at recess seeing a prostitute sell themselves literally right there, right there. And then let's just be truthful. Some of those prostitutes probably not even leaving off that block. They probably gonna make money right there on that block and then get out the car and then go get some more money on the same block. So they're working right there in front of these children. So. And then for example, too, you take that young girl whose family is poor. And she has younger brothers and sisters that have to take care of her brothers and sisters. And she keeps seeing that prostitute steady making money, but she don't have no money. Eventually, she's gonna be a prostitute and we're could, we're creating a continuous cycle. So I just want to know, is there a way that you guys can talk to the school police? School police can come up with a plan to get more funds to, to, uh, have a, a school officer, two of them maybe, or just one. To stay in the back, post up like they, you know, you know, just post up in the back and run them up out of there. Uh, and that's all really.
Thank you so much for your comment. Up next, we have Ralph Cabral. Is Mr. Cabral?
He is not here, I don't believe.
Okay. Um, next up, we have Raul Canciola. No, he's not here either. Okay, and that concludes our public comments for this evening. Uh, next up, we have four point oh closed session, four point one closed session, public comments. Do we have any?
Do not.
Okay, thank you. So now we have four point two closed session. All right, all right. So we're back to, back in session five point oh, action reported from closed session five point one. Expulsion of students be it resolved, the board, the board of education accepts and adopts the recommendation findings. Of the hearing panel based on a review of the panel's findings, of facts and recommendations and orders the expulsion of the following students. With the identification numbers as listed below in accordance with the board rules and regulations and compliance with education code section forty-eight, forty-eight nine hundred. Second, moved by Dr. Wyatt, second by Ms. Medina. Vote, please. Motion passed, five point two. Students recommended for suspension or expulsion, excluding mandatory offenses, but remanded to youth court for other means of correction. Be resolved, the board of education accepts and adopts the recommendation of and findings. Of facts of positive youth development and orders the suspension or expulsion of the following students with the identification numbers as listed below in accordance with. In accordance with the board rules and regulations and in compliance with education code section forty-eight nine hundred. Moved. Moved by Ms. Medina, second by Mr. Santos. Vote, please. Motion passed, five point, point three lift to readmit of expulsion of students. Be it resolved, the board of education authorizes the readmission of the following students with the identification numbers as indicated below. To schools of the San Bernardino City Unified School District in accordance with the board rules and regulations. And in compliance with education code section forty-eight nine hundred. Moved. Moved by Ms. Felicia Alexander and second by Mr. Tillman. Vote, please. Motion carries, five point four. Petition to expunge, rescind, sealing of record or modify youth court of. Or expulsion, the board of education authorizes the expulsion and or youth court modification, expungement or rescinding of the following students with the identification numbers as indicated below. To schools of the San Bernardino City Unified School District in accordance with the board rules and regulations and in compliance with education section code forty-eight nine hundred. Move. Second, moved by Dr. Wyatt, second by Ms. Medina. Vote, please. Motion passed, five point five, other closed section action. There is no other closed section, session action at this time. Six point oh, student board members, six point one, reports and comments. And I'm gonna go ahead and start with Ms. Rosenbloom.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Angelique Rosenbloom and I attend Pacific High School. I want to give a big shout out to Nico for getting first place in jumps, second for Genesis. And first place for our high school co-ed team. First place for stunts and first place in best dynamic team. We are holding a blood drive tomorrow to, uh, February nineteenth. I will be participating in that. Our first semester, our first semester awards this Thursday after school in our gym, February twentieth. ASVAP administration is going on this week, all week long. I know I've said this before, but I wanted to thank our schools, our school security for keeping me in check and making sure I s- I succeed in what I'm doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rosenbloom. Up next is Ms. Villalbaso.
Good evening. My name is Tasha Villalbaso and I'm a representative for Middle College and Sierra High School. I want to express my gratitude to the administration team for being on top of everything and actually create and actively creating opportunities for the student body. At Middle College, we are currently working on the student board member recruitment video with our di- digital media teacher. This recruit- recruitment video will be sent out to all schools to be viewed. At Cajon, the cheerleading team just won the USA National Championships. At San Bernardino High School, they are having a grand opening for the Performing Arts Center on March fifteenth. SAC members are excited for the upcoming meetings and for Government Day that will be held Tuesday, February twenty-fifth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Villalbaso. And up next is Ms. Abaniz.
Good evening. My name is Patience Abaniz and I'm representing Middle College High School. I want to express my gratitude to all the staff at Middle College for always going the extra mile inside and outside the classroom. At Middle College, our associated student body is organizing our annual spring festival on March twenty-eighth. At Indian Springs, their boys' basketball team is going to quarterfinals for CIF. At San Gorgonio High School, two students have signed to D-one schools for sports. Their names are Doron Tyson and Jasmine Benson. In Slack, students are, in Slack, students are preparing to, preparing for their leadership program at California Baptist University. To conclude, I want to wish my fellow students good luck on their midterms. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Abaniz. Up next, we have seven point oh administrative reports and presentations. Seven point one, project impact CS USB. Sa- slash SBC USD partnership. And I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Funchess and his team.
Think Dr. Sumbaro has a few handouts for, for the board and cabinet? Thank you, Board President Savio, so Vice President Abiles Grande. Board Superintendent Ariano and Cabinet. I look forward to this presentation. We've been waiting for this for quite some time. So we're happy to be in front of you tonight. And Board, you have been at the forefront of developing policies and supporting systems that directly impact. Our highest needs student groups. Your advocacy for programs that expand bilingual and biliterate opportunities. Has set an example for other organizations striving to achieve similar goals. The Targeted Instruction Improvement Plan, or TIP, policy. Designed to enhance the academic achievement of African-American students while increasing graduation rates. And A through G participation. We are, it was the first of its kind and now we're seeing some of the fruits of that, of that labor. In alignment with these goals, the board has been also intentional and steadfast. In supporting our district's efforts to build a highly qualified and diverse workforce. That reflects the community we serve through our grow our own best practice. Uh, our teachers of color campaign, our tuition reimbursement for classified employees. And now through our SB USD shines vision twenty thirty. As an extension of this commitment that our board shares. We are excited to partner with the California State University of San Bernardino. Uh, the dean of the College of Education, Dr. Damwachuku, Dr. Becky Sumbaro behind me. Project Impact. This initiative is dedicated to increasing teacher diversity in our region. By intentionally recruiting men of color and in particular African-American and Latino males. Uh, research consistently shows that students perform better academically. When they have access to highly qualified teachers who share their cultural backgrounds and experiences. The connection that can lead to higher test scores, improved attendance, greater engagement. And improved sense of belonging in our schools and also a belief that our scholars too. Can pursue leadership roles in various fields. So Board, I welcome tonight Dr. Damwachuku. And we present to you Project Impact and our partnership with Cal State San Bernardino.
Thank you, Dr. Funchess. Thank you, Board. Thank you, Superintendent. Um, it's a great honor to be here to speak to you about Project Impact. Project Impact is a dream come true. It's a response to need in the K-12 setting. Just a brief introduction, I come from the K-12 environment. I was a teacher in Los Angeles in the first school district. Before going into higher education and my colleague, Dr. Becky Sumbaro. Also a seasoned school administrator who is also now my assistant dean. Uh, this vision is anchored on multiple research. Research that shows that, um. So it's research that shows that if we take action to address the need. Uh, in the K-12 setting, we can actually get more positive results. Uh, that speak to academic improvement, high school completion and college going rate. So this program was initiated, uh, in the fall of twenty nineteen. Launched in the spring of twenty twenty. You all know what was happening in twenty twenty, uh, spring. Uh, but it did not deter us. So Project Impact is intentional recruitment, training, deployment. And mentoring of males of color. With specific focus on Hispanic, African-American and Native American men. Uh, the goal is to. Bring more of these men into the classroom. So that. We can have not just the power of representation, but improved academic achievement for our children because. A lot of research that I'm gonna share with you. So this work is based on a lot of research. Uh, Leslie Fenwick is a professor and dean at Howard University. Uh, who wrote about the problem that it. The educational system experienced during Brown v Board of Education when it was supposed to be. Uh, a positive thing. But most brown and black administrators and teachers lost their jobs. And since that time, there has been inequity in representation. Research from Johns Hopkins University shows that when you look at our students. Over the years, California, for example, has talked about closing achievement gap for more than twenty years now. And even when the achievement gap has started to narrow. Excuse me, when academic achievement has improved, the gap has not really narrowed. So across the ethnic groups, even when they have all made progress, the gap has remained. Why? Lot of our students don't feel like they belong in the school setting. You all know, uh, the dynamics that affect them. But these are some of the research that has led us to do what we are trying to do at Casas San Bernardino. Black boys of low socioeconomic backgrounds. Receiving free or reduced lunch, increased three to four to eight. When they have black teachers. Saw increased aspiration for college by twenty-nine percent. Elementary black students. Are able to get three to six points, percentile points higher in their star tests just for having a black student, a teacher. K to three students with black teachers were fifteen percent less likely to drop out of school. And ten percent more likely to go to college. And also the white students start to benefit exceptionally when they have this exposure. So what are we doing at Casas San Bernardino? For five years now, we have invested. In this project, we call Project Impact. We started a recruitment approach that targets these men. Using unconventional approaches. We are going to churches, we're going to community events, we're going to different, uh, places to try to recruit men into this program. Because the narrative out there is that teaching doesn't pay much and many men are discouraged from going into it. So we are reeducating and helping them buy into the idea that they can make a difference. They can also build a career. By becoming teachers. They can also build a career by becoming teachers. So we are succeeding in recruiting. I'll tell you, and I'm going to give you some data, in fact, the data we have here is actually obsolete right now because we have successfully recruited more than one hundred and sixty something men into this program since the five years we've started it. And so what we do, we recruit, we train. We provide a training that goes above and beyond the traditional teacher preparation program. Each one of these men go through our credential programs, multiple, single, or special education program. But also, we provide them what we call Master Your Craft Training, which allows them to be exposed to teaching as a profession at a higher level. We do weekend workshops. We invite superintendents, we invite principals, we invite schools that administer to come and interact with these men and educate them so that they can begin to see education as a profession that they can engage in and build a career on. We also take them to conferences. That's where Dr. Sumbera has done an excellent job for providing opportunity for them to go to professional conferences and begin to learn more beyond what is happening in the classroom, that education is actually a career. And these men have even done presentation at conferences. These are things that their peers in the traditional programs have not had opportunity to do. We deploy them strategically. Our goal is to have them placed in places we believe they can make the greatest impact. And we have successfully done that with quite a number of them. We have a young man right now who is in Coachella Valley, who is, who studied teaching biology, who is now a department chair for biology in his high school. He started an after-school program, which is targeting kids that are struggling and is providing them free after-school support. That's just one of many success stories that these men are experiencing. So this deployment aspect is where we come to you. We discover that we make more progress when we work hand in glove with school districts and we're able to work with who you already have in your employ. Your classified staff is a very promising pool from which we can actually recruit seasoned people who can go into education. Your substitute list, we have developed a program with another school district from which they have been able to recruit about thirty-six men from their own classified pool, many of whom are right now in the classroom. We have men who were groundskeepers who are right now in the classroom. We have men who was, one of them was a security guard. He's now in the classroom. So we have, and most of these men actually, to your surprise, are teaching science, math, subjects that you would not even think that they will be qualified to teach. But because many of them, those were their majors, but they didn't go anywhere with it. So mentorship, you know very well about teacher attrition in California and the fact that we lose a lot of our teachers within the first five years. This program is offering a mentoring support that starts from the time we employ them, enroll them to the time they get tenure in the school district. So these mentors stay with them and work with them until they are tenured in the school district. So we have multiple pathways for these teachers that we are training. So right now, basically, this was our fall data. One hundred and sixty-two enrolled. Our current enrollment as of this spring is actually ninety-eight. And program completers is about sixty-two. So we're hoping that over time, we can change the demographic in the inland empire by having more men who look like the boys who come to our schools in the classrooms. And we're also hoping that we can extend what we're doing here beyond inland empire to other CSU environments. So we have, there is a scaling that we see happening as other school districts even outside of this area begin to come to us and ask about it. The pictures you see in the handout we gave you, every one of those apart from the K-12 students, every adult image you see is a man who is in the program. These are not photoshopped that we copied from here. So these men, all these, this is actually the group, the first group from Rialto Unified School District that joined Project Impact. So I mentioned Rialto. They have, they've worked with us for about three years now, and their success rate is very high. San Bernardino actually is our closest district. And I shared this idea with Dale Marsden before he stepped away. And we talked about it because your district has gone through changes. And Dr. Funches has been very much with us, talking with us, and we've been in conversation. And we think we can do this with you and make greater impact if you're willing to work with us. We want to support you to build a workforce that represents your demographic. We have the resources in place, and we're simply asking that you allow us to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Medina?
First of all, I want to say thank you for bringing the presentation. I believe you have a really supportive board. I know myself in trying to bring this. We currently have an educator pathway, which is awesome, at one of our school sites. And then how we can also, I love the fact that you mentioned classified, but then also trying to see how we can encourage students to want to come back to our school district as teachers and trying to look at maybe creating a policy or so forth to try to encourage that. Last week, or it's about two weeks ago, I spoke with several educators up in Sacramento. It's through the California Educator Diversity Group. And I spoke with several teachers that they said sometimes they feel like we want to encourage more of our students of color trying to come back to our school district as teachers, but knowing that, you know, the pay isn't as well compensated, especially their first years. And so what can we do to help encourage even our students? Let's just say we have their career pathway in educator. And then how do we encourage them to come back and to choose becoming a teacher? I know that you're offering great mentorships, what I think is great, it's needed. Like you mentioned, within the first five years, but what else can we do to help support them or even encourage them to get into the field?
So one of the things that have made this program successful is that knowing that in California, teaching certification is a post-baccalaureate. So you have to have a bachelor degree before you go into teaching, most cases. And so we are dealing with adults, many of whom have family. So apart from that lack of attraction because of the low wage, there's also the challenge of student teaching, which requires them to commit fifteen to sixteen weeks of their time and not work to make a living. One of the things that I've worked with this program is that we determined to ensure that the students who go through this program do not take any loan. So we go out to look for funds. Rialto that I mentioned has done an excellent job because the school district has supported their own men through some funds from the district. So these men have gone through the program without paying any tuition. The rest of the men, we go out and we look for money. And we try to, as of today, the number I showed you, none of them have left the program with a loan. That's one of the incentives we are building to this program. And one of my primary jobs is going out to look for the money. Dr. Sumbera runs the program along with Dr. James Hoff, who is a retired principal from Coachella Valley, who is the current director of the program. So but yes, we know the challenge. But also education, we provide a lot of education to these men so they understand that teachers actually don't retire poor. So we educate them and we give them, so because there is a misperception that teachers are poor. They can start with low wage. But if they stay in the profession, they can actually retire comfortably. We try to provide those kinds of, you know, education to them.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Ms. Alexander?
Thank you for your presentation and your commitment to increase our male population in terms of people of color and teachers in our school district. I know that you mentioned other school districts, but I just want to kind of focus on San Bernardino, City Unified School District. And one of the questions I have is in reference to the pathways, the succession plan, because you had mentioned it could be a classified employee. And can you kind of walk me through that process? Like, how does that work in terms of moving that, moving the needle in that opportunity for an employee who expresses interest to go into teaching?
The process is this, we, as soon as the district is open to working with us, we will come and do informational meeting. You will be the ones to invite your classified staff to either a Zoom meeting or in-person meeting. Dr. Sumbera usually is the one who comes to make a presentation to them and educate them on what we are offering. And from there, those who indicate interest, we begin to work with them. In fact, one of the things that she has successfully put in place is that are men who come, but they don't have the required GPA to get into the program. So we have put together a packet that allows them to go through our current technical bachelor degree program, take two or three classes, meet their requirement, and transition into the credential program. So we have built in scaffolds to ensure that they're able to overcome the hurdles and coming. So we are engaged. We come to you. We provide information. And once they indicate interest, one of the successful ways it has worked also is that the district will have a liaison who will work with us. So that person will be the person that we're going to communicate with as we go through the process.
Thank you. And one other question, are there any specific subjects that you're focused on over versus others?
Well, now we are covering the three major credentialing areas of multiple subject, single subject, and special education. So those are the areas of focus for now.
Thank you. Ms. Abilis Grande?
Now, how do you pronounce your name again? Tell me.
My name is Chinaka. That's the first name.
Yes, yes.
Last name is Domwachuku. It's four sounds.
Chinaka, alright. Well, I just, I'm really excited to share with you. I heard you speak up at Cal State. I think on the day that they dedicated James R. Watson and Judy Rodriguez Watson College of Ed. And I was so impressed. I remember I went over to you. I think you were quite busy, but I did manage to get your card and a few of your companions there, they gave me your cards. And since then, I have indeed spoken of your program when I see young men of color. And when I say that, I say anyone non-white. That's it, okay? I'm sorry, but that's what I took it to mean. So I spoke to a lot of Latinos. And more specifically, I talked to our campus security guard. I've been trying to take them away from Chief Joseph all this time, and now I'm coming out in the open. They would make fantastic teachers. And I say that you pass out your cards up and down here and we'll start helping you talk about it. And I see young teachers coming in, intern teachers came in my, in and out of my classroom many years, that they're just needing some direction. And I was just thinking of that because I've been invited to Career Day at Salinas. And last year I went to Career Day and I did take my puppets and talk about becoming a ventriloquist. I did. I'm not sorry, but I invite you to maybe start at the elementary schools and come out and talk to them about being a teacher. And I would like to, I think this next year I'm going to talk about trying to become a teacher. Do we have pathways for teaching in our high schools? Okay, so maybe I'll take some of those with me and promote teaching. Alright. But you have to have hobbies too. That's what I love about teaching because you can be anything you want to be, right? Thank you, sir, for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I'll also just take the opportunity to say thank you so much for the presentation. I do have just a couple of brief questions for you on your that slide right there. On the bottom where it says Project Impact, PI data, the one hundred and sixty-two, it says total number enrolled over lifetime. What does that mean over lifetime?
This is, that production was actually for spring of twenty twenty-four because we had Superintendent of Public Instruction Tony Thurmond. That was, that spring. So lifetime is from spring twenty twenty to spring twenty twenty-four. But for now, we're talking about that number has gone up because of our spring, fall and spring, fall twenty-four and spring twenty-five.
Add it. So then that was the one cohort?
Yeah.
Okay, so currently we are on a second roll of cohort?
No, no.
We've had a cohort each semester starting spring twenty twenty.
Okay.
So we have had several cohorts and we have several members that have received their tenure, have begun building student programs to help men of color to graduate. So boys of color, we have African American clubs, we have Hispanic clubs that are helping students who are struggling graduate. So not only the teachers are out there, but we've had many cohorts. It's been, you know, five or six. And then with our prominent district, we've had four cohorts with them.
We have, we started with a ten, the first semester, a cohort of ten. Our target is to graduate thirty men each year. We actually exceeded that target this last academic year. We graduated thirty-two in one year.
Wow, wow. So maybe I'm misunderstanding a little bit here. This data that is being presented, is it solely about SBCUSD? Okay, so I would be interested to know how many, because I would like for us to focus and support, obviously, our pathway that we have at a roll. So internally, maybe us working a little bit more closely with Arroyo Valley, since they already have the pathway established there and really, you know, helping them, you know, move along and collecting our own internal data in terms of how many actually, you know, move through, move forward, graduate, and then eventually get back employed here with us. So for me, that would be the longer, you know, goal that I would like to see and then the data on that.
Right, Board President Sabios, that's right in line with our goals and our intentions. So we will collect that data and we will be working closely with Arroyo Valley High School and the teacher pathway and even San G and the pathway that they have for preschool as well. So that's right in line with our thought process.
And maybe we can even provide something like Rialto, you know, is, in terms of like, you know, offering them some grants so that they don't have to incur debt, you know, if they're able to successfully navigate through it. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
We have worked with Arroyo Valley and the pathways. The Project Impact men have come out and give presentation to the high school students. And we've also worked with San G through the tutoring programs. We're tutoring in the high school and they're mentoring our students. So we've worked with both of those schools.
Beautiful. Thank you so much. Well, thank you so much for the wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
If I could, and Board, I just want to say thank you. Thank you. You've been an advocate and a support for our efforts for creating and maintaining and our diverse teacher workforce. And we know that this will continue to be a beacon for our district and help us to reach our goals, Vision 2030. So thank you, Board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright. Okay, moving on to seven Okay, moving on to 7.2 Administrative Presentation Midyear Update of the 2024-2025 Local Control and Accountability Plan. And I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mrs. Applegate.
Thank you, President Sabios, Vice President Ms. Abilis Grande, our Superintendent, Board, Cabinet. I am going to go ahead and hand it over to Ms. Kimber Sargent. She is our Director of Categorical, and she will be bringing the presentation on our midyear update.
All right. Good evening, President Sabios, Vice President Abilis Grande, Board, Superintendent Ariano, and Cabinet. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. This microphone works so much better from the side. So I've learned that over time. Tonight, we're going to be presenting a midyear update to our Local Control and Accountability Plan. You should have received a document today. Our LCAP is already a very lengthy document at a little under 300 pages. The midyear report of it is just under 100 pages, and we are looking forward to next year's template adding on additional pages. So I will do my very best tonight to make sure that I provide you with the level of detail, not only required for our midyear update, but also hopefully answer any questions that you might have. I'll refer to your packet as well, so you know where to look in the packet based on the presentation. For tonight, we will take a look at the LCAP cycle timeline. In the origination of the LCAP, it was sort of a point in the year. You could point to it and say this is the LCAP development time, but it actually goes on a cycle now that continues throughout the school year. So I'll share some information about that. We'll talk about some of the communication tools that we share with our educational partners. Our educational partners is anybody who has a vested interest in our school district. So this includes our employees, classified, certified, nonclassified. It includes our students at the secondary level who participate in activities such as school site council or Student Leadership Advisory Committee, or also known as SLAC, as well as our middle schools have secondaries within their school site council as well. It includes our community partners, our parents, our grandparents, really anybody who is looking towards supporting the success of our students. So we'll share some tools that we have with them to use for, that they use in sharing out and echoing this plan to the community. I will share with you the midyear progress. This midyear check-in will provide an update on our highlights. So what we're doing really well, we're seeing our internal data points moving in the right direction. We're also seeing our data, that's our lagging data, showing an impact where we're seeing positive movement in our student outcomes. We will take a look at our expenditures. As you know, our LCAP covers just over $223 million. So there are a lot of dollars that our board is investing in our students. So we will show where we are at the midyear level. And then take a look at our local data, which is included within the report that you have. Students, you have this digitally. So you have a folder that has a QR code that you're able to access this information digitally. So we'll start off with our timeline. Our timeline for the adoption of our plan begins in June. In June, you'll see me here for a public hearing. And then at a second meeting, the Board of Education, after all questions are answered, options for public comment, we'll adopt the plan. We send that to the County of San Bernardino. They are the approver of the plan. Throughout the period of the development, I work alongside our county partners who provide technical assistance with the contents of our plan, make sure that we're meeting all of the requirements, that it is clear for our educational partners. That will take us into September and October. So if you've been to a DLEC meeting, or a DAC meeting, or a CAC meeting, or a SLAC meeting, you will see me on this sort of tour. And I'm going to each of these parent advisory groups, providing an update, not only how did we get to where we are right now, but how are we doing so far? So in the statutes, we have to do that at the midyear, but in our district, it's a priority to keep everybody informed throughout the progress. So that this isn't a plan that we write and we put up on a shelf and we never worry about again. It's a living plan that we have a continuous update cycle that takes place September through October. Dr. Wyatt has been on tour with me before. I'll say he was the headliner of the tour for sure. But that takes place September through October. Beginning in November to January is when we get into the midyear portion. We start to look at our expenditures that we have to date and our data points that are coming in. This includes our dashboard, which you had a presentation from Dr. Cleveland under Educational Services, shared with you those dashboard outcomes. You looked at not only the school-wide outcomes, but also the student group outcomes. You will see many of those very same outcomes contained within this report because our LCAP is based on our California dashboard and our local metrics. So some of the information in the report is a repetition of what you already received when you had the presentation on the California dashboard. I will take this tour of a midyear update out to our parent groups and our student groups again. I also prepare materials for our school site principals to share this information through school site council and through our DAC report. Each month, we provide a DAC report to our principals and the program staff so that that can be shared at the school site council level. So we have communication at the school level, communication at the district level, and a mechanism to communicate between as well. From February to April, we're already looking ahead to the next school year. So we are living in a current school year and planning for what is coming next. So after our midyear update, we start to look at all of our metrics, what we did well, what we still need to continue to refine or make shine, and what we will do differently next year. We may have a new need that has come up based on our data. Our student population does change each year. So if any new needs come up, we would include those in that development process. A draft of the plan is shared out to educational partners to gather feedback. Does it reflect our community voice? Can you see your input in the plan? Can you see your fingerprints on what we value as a school district community in our plan? That takes us to May, where we will have our official community meeting. At our community meeting, that is where we give a special invitation to all parent advisory groups, but it is also open to the community. And we ask them for their input on the final draft. Once we have our final draft, we make sure everything looks good for us and for the county. We will provide that at the public hearing, and that starts to cycle all over again. So there is no stop and there is no start. It is something that happens continually throughout the year. On this screen, you'll see some of the communication tools that we have for our Local Control and Accountability Plan. In your packet that you have, you have a copy of these tools. These tools are available in English and in Spanish. They are under the tab that's labeled infographics. So if you are looking in your binder, it looks like this. These infographics are meant to start the conversation between an educational partner and somebody else on what is contained within our LCAP. There is a very short version, kind of that 30,000-foot view of what our LCAP is all about, what our district population is, and the funds that we allocate within this plan. And then there is a more detailed version of that exact same infographic that goes into more detail about our LCAP. So if you look at the 30,000-foot view and you're like, okay, I I have an idea, I have a sense of what it's about, but I have some questions. I want to know, you know, what are we doing in goal number one? What are some of those metrics? What are some of those actions that we have? That would be in the longer format. So on your sheets that you have, you have two Post-it notes. One is bright pink. That is for the two-page version. The other is a teal, we'll call that, turquoise color, and that is the longer version that goes into far more detail about our LCAP. If you are very, very interested, all of the documents for our LCAP are posted online on our district's website. You can get there from the homepage. It's our intention that you don't have to search around and click on menus to find information. That's right on the homepage. It also has a very simple link. Thank you to the support of our communications team that you can go to sbcusd.com/lcap. And you will see there not only our current LCAP, but also the history of our plans. Tonight, I'm going to share with you a very brief animated video. This is to help bring to life what we have in the two-page or the 30,000-foot view infographic. This video, along with the infographics, again, are available in English and in Spanish. So I'm hoping when I hit next, we see the video.
The 2024-25 Local Control and Accountability Plan, or LCAP, describes how the San Bernardino City Unified School District aims to improve student outcomes. Each year, San Bernardino City USD collaborates with educational partners to create a plan that increases student progress, decreases performance gaps, and reports on the progress made the previous year. San Bernardino City USD currently serves 44,712 TK through 12th grade students who learn in our 74 schools and who are supported by over 9,000 dedicated employees who embrace our district's mission to ensure that each student has the skills, resilience, and determination to create their path and thrive in school, career, and life. To support this mission in 2024-25, San Bernardino City USD will spend over $1 billion in general fund expenditures and over $223 million in specific LCAP expenditures. These expenditures support San Bernardino City's LCAP goals, which include: supporting student academics and innovation; creating safe, secure, and attractive learning environments; and strengthening collaborative engagement with families and educational partners. To learn more about San Bernardino City USD's goals and plan details, please refer to the full LCAP infographic and supporting documents available online. Together, we're improving our children's education and creating a better future for
So from this video, you'll see that the LCAP is not a plan on its own. It's a plan that aligns with what we're doing as a district. It's aligned to our SHINE's 2030 vision. It incorporates a lot of the feedback that we received during our superintendent input sessions, our student input sessions, as well as our parent advisories, such as attractive learning environments. That was a big change from our previous LCAP to our current LCAP, is we've incorporated those additional pieces in. And again, these are available to you digitally from your folder as well. So I will transition into the highlights from our LCAP. If you take a look on either your presentation or the screen, you'll see some of the highlights that we have selected for today. These are really our school site-based actions that we have that support our students. So you'll see for goal number one, it's split over the two infographics there, the first being our CTE pathways. You had a presentation from Dr. Van Ktesen and her team under Educational Services. Much of the work that we're doing to build our pathways, expand our pathways, and ensure that they are receiving the silver and gold levels is funded through LCAP. LCAP is also used as match dollars as we seek out additional funding to continue to expand those programs. We also support the AVID program, which is Advancement via Individual Determination. This program, we have from TK all the way through 12th grade. It looks a little different in TK than it does in 12th grade, but this provides not only funding for training for our teachers to make sure they have access to teach those skills and use those strategies, but also materials that they can use to implement the program. At the secondary level, it pays for staffing interns that provide the tutorials as part of the AVID elective. Our teachers, as you know, receive additional funding for consumable supplemental materials. This is to support their instruction. This is not the only area where teachers receive additional funding at a school site. When they complete their plan development, they will allocate funds towards supplemental materials in their base program funding. They will also allocate towards materials for the teachers. This is to add on that layer because we do have specialized programs and individual needs for our teachers. So our teachers receive that additional allocation. We continue to prioritize early literacy in our district. We have 19 schools that are identified as Literacy Coach Reading Specialist Grant recipients, but we know literacy is important at all of our schools. So all of our schools at the elementary level, we fund through the LCAP the library assistant position, who helps to model reciprocity in reading, how to select a book, how to look at their reading level from their accelerated reader and choose a book that's at an appropriate level for them. We also have prioritized academic field trips. This is feedback that we hear a lot, not only from our students, but also from our parents, to extend the learning beyond the four walls of the classroom. So we have our everyday lessons, but we want to see what does that look like out in the real world. So we support our academic field trips that include science camp at the fifth grade level. This has been a priority for our LCAP over two cycles, so that our students in fifth grade are able to practice the hands-on science learning that they will have to be tested on at the state level when they take the cast. We continue to support VAPA. We were actually a leader as a district in supporting VAPA prior to Prop 28. We already had this as a priority. It has been in our LCAP. We use Prop 28 to extend even further our VAPA programs, but we continue to keep this as a priority within our LCAP. At each school site, there's a staff member. This is a lot of acronyms at one time, so I'm going to break them down. You have an MTSS, a multi-tiered system of support, TOSA, which is a teacher on special assignment. This is a teacher that specifically focuses on the Tier Two and Tier Three intervention practices at the school site. They will work with the Tier Two team to analyze data and assign interventions to students. This is part of Mrs. Applegate's direction in making sure that we have a very robust MTSS system at each of our school sites. So each of our school sites have a staff member that is dedicated to that process. Continuing to the other side, you'll see that we have school site allocations. This is where local control becomes even more local, because at the school site level, we know that there are individual needs that differ from what the entire district needs. Each school has individual programs, a unique set of staff members, a unique set of students, and they utilize school site council and ELAC to gather input and to create an action plan that's aligned to their goals that they set within their school plan for student achievement. So a portion of our LCAP dollars are assigned to our school sites for that purpose. We continue to prioritize transportation for our students to ensure that they're able to have a safe transport to and from schools. This includes our magnet program transportation. This does not include special education transportation. That does come from a different funding source. At each of our school sites, as we support the language development of our students, we have English language facilitators, or ELFs. That's possibly the best job. You get to be called an ELF. Their job is to work with the teachers in monitoring the progress of English learners and provide any interventions that might be needed if a student is behind on their timeline. Our school sites also have additional staff members, or FTEs, full-time equivalents, that are there to support those specialized programs, such as our CTE pathways, our bilingual programs, to reduce our class size at the eighth grade level and the ninth grade level. We provide technology for our students. As you know, post-COVID, this has become a big part of our our students' instruction, actually during COVID and now post-COVID as well. Our TK through second grade, they are two to one, which means they have a device at home and they have a device at school. They don't carry the device back and forth. They have one in each location. Grades three and up, all the way through 12th grade, they have one device per student that the student will carry back and forth with them. This does not come from the school site allocation. This is a centrally funded initiative. So if a student's Chromebook is not working, they reach out to the school site and the school site can request a replacement. If the charger is not working, very similar. Those are common issues that come up, in particular, as we transport back and forth. A school site could determine that they would like to purchase more than the two-to-one, which they could use their school site allocation or other funding sources to support that need. And then lastly, as we expand under the direction of Mr. Adriano, our STEAM programs with Dr. Clyde and his team. STEAM was a very small part of our LCAP about two cycles ago, and we have grown and grown as we did pilot schools. Now we're working on CSTEM certification for our teachers, having labs at our schools, having staffing for our labs, as we really look at the full integration of STEAM programs at more than just our magnet schools. So this is a growing, over time, school support that's provided through LCAP. For goal number two, as you remember, this is around our safe and welcoming and attractive learning environments. We support our health aides. Those positions are funded partly with LCAP and partly with our expanded learning programs to ensure that the staff member is there for eight hours. So as the students participate in sunrise and caps, they have access to those services. We have prioritized counselors at the elementary level. If you've been on the board for a long time, you'll remember when this came into action. Normally, counselors are required only at the high school level as a guidance or career counselor. But we have counselors all the way at the elementary level, middle school level, and high school level. At the elementary and middle, really supporting the lessons for social-emotional learning, providing small group counseling, one-on-one counseling, helping to organize wraparound services as well. We support our crossing guards. This became particularly important when we had the change in start time for our secondary schools. So we have increased. This is a growing action as well as we needed additional crossing guards to make sure our intersections were covered with our start and end times. We have attendance staff at each of our school sites. This need arose originally post-COVID when we had very high chronic absenteeism numbers under the direction of Dr. Rodriguez. We have seen dramatic improvement in those metrics as we now have staff at each school site where attendance is their focus. So they will help to remove those barriers for families to help students come to school. We have our vice principals at the elementary level. These are to help support our safe learning environments and allow our principals to be in the classroom, providing instructional supervision, giving feedback to our teachers, working with our families. So these are at our elementary level. And then lastly, on that side, we have Bringing Hope to Saturdays. This is a program that schools opt into to provide enrichment and additional learning on Saturdays. It's not the Saturday school that I grew up with in high school. This is a Saturday school that kids want to sign up for and want to go to. We receive feedback to have more and more schools join. So each year, we have had more schools that are able to join us. And then for goal number three, we have our parent volunteer workers. We know this is an important position for our school sites as they are the bridge between the family, the community, and the school system. They often are working to help them understand the services that are available and remove any barriers or obstacles that they might be encountering. And then translation and interpretation services. We want to increase access for that so that at any meeting, not just our board meeting here, but our school site council, our ELAC, or our parent-teacher conference, has that interpretation and translation available to them. President Sabios, I don't know if you want me to pause or I will keep going? I will take direction from you.
No questions? You can keep going.
Okay. All right. So that will take us then now to the expenditure portion. So we did the highlights. We're now on the expenditures. We did separate these because we have three primary goals within our LCAP that support English learner, low-income, and foster youth. In my presentations, I refer to these as the golden goals as these are goals that are considered contributing because we use the data of English learner, low-income, and foster youth to identify the need. That does not mean that only those students can benefit from it. All students can benefit from it, but the metric that was used was from those three student groups. So goals one, two, and three, which we've just reviewed, you can see the implementation progress that we have so far this year. Goal number one, again centered around academics at $162 million. We have spent 71% of those dollars with still a large portion of our school year remaining. Goal number two, with over $36 million invested, we have spent 88% of those funds. And goal number three, with just over $5 million, 73% of those funds being spent. When we look at overall between goals one, two, and three are contributing actions, we're at 74%. We are doing great. Our school sites are on top of it. They are very aware of purchasing deadlines that come up towards the end of the year to ensure that our funds are utilized for this year's students. So this is a priority for them and for our departments. If a new need arises, I regularly meet with the LCAP leads to get feedback from them and find out, you know, tell me a little bit about where this is coming from? What data are you looking at? To see if LCAP can support it or if there might be another funding source available to support that. So this is goals one through three. The infographics that we reviewed cover goals one through three. Our next set here, these are goals four through 20. Our LCAP in the past was three goals, and that was the end of the plan. Done. Thank you. We're all set. The rules changed for this last cycle, and we are required to incorporate a second funding source. So this is not LCAP funding that is supplemental and concentration funding. This is a different funding source that is found within the plan called LCAP. Very confusing. We did not make that rule. We did separate them out, though, so that you can keep track of which are supplemental and concentration LCAP funds and which are equity multiplier funds. So what you're looking at on the screen here are Equity Multiplier. This was a new program that was introduced last year. This came as a result of an assembly bill that didn't make it all the way. It was vetoed. The intention of the original assembly bill was to support African-American student achievement. That wasn't allowed to move forward due to a decision of funding based on the race as the primary filter. What came out of it was Equity Multiplier. And Equity Multiplier eligibility is based on socio-economically disadvantaged rate, also sometimes called low-income rate. You can choose which vocabulary dollars you'd like to spend there. That needed to be more than 70%, and you had to have a non-stability rate over 25%. Non-stability is the movement of our kids. So as they enroll and either stay at a school or go to another school, they might enroll at a school and be capped to another school. They might enroll at a school and get a permit to attend a bilingual program at another school. All of those contribute to the non-stability numbers. The higher the free and reduced-priced meal, the higher the non-stability. The thought was the higher the need, right? So the identification is not based on the California dashboard or any of those metrics. It is a demographic program. The demographics we're looking at is the socio-economically disadvantaged and non-stability. So the schools that met those two pieces are listed here. So we have all of these schools and how much they budgeted. What is different about this budget, though, it is a three-year plan. So it was not expected that they would get these funds and spend them all down in one year like the LCAP is. For Equity Multiplier, it's a three-year spending plan. So for some of the schools, you will see a higher percent that has already been spent. And for some of the schools, you will see a lower percent that has been spent. Those schools that have a lower percent that has been spent are working on year-two implementation. For many of the schools that have the lower percentage, they also received the Literacy Coaches and Reading Specialist Grant, and they wanted that program to be in place before they add a new program, right? It's hard to add all of the things at one time. I meet with our principals under the Equity Multiplier program. It is a requirement that they do a comprehensive needs assessment. So they look at their data to determine their greatest needs, and they write a plan. That plan is incorporated into our LCAP. So for each of our schools, they are a goal. We have two of our Equity Multiplier principals here tonight. In support of that, you'll see the work that they have planned within Equity Multiplier. You have a tab in your binder that's labeled Equity Multiplier Infographics. Every single school has an infographic that they share with their educational partners to talk about what are we doing using our Equity Multiplier funds? At this time of the year, I also meet with them to start reflecting on the implementation of their plan and making plans for next year. So these schools were identified in 2024. New schools were just identified in 2025 that will receive an allocation. Of the schools that you see listed up there, most of them are repeaters for 2025. So they will have this allocation, and now they will have a second allocation. Those will again be incorporated within our LCAP. Okay? Lastly, this takes us to our goal 21. This goal was added also as a new requirement under a program called Differentiated Assistance. Differentiated Assistance is an identification from our county based on the California dashboard of student groups that have consecutive years of underperformance. The student group that we are identified for under Differentiated Assistance is our African-American student group. As you recall, Dr. Funchess, in his presentation just prior to mine, mentioned the TIP policy 6012.1. Our district already had it as a priority to support African-American student achievement. We didn't have it as, we had it as a policy, not as a plan. We now also have it as a plan. So the goals that we have within our TIP policy to increase access to preschool, improve proficiency in ELA and math, increase the number of A-through-G courses and pathway participation in AP, providing interventions to students to reduce disproportionality in special education. That is what you will see reflected in our Differentiated Assistance plan. As part of the TIP policy, there's also a funding piece described within that policy that states it will come from multiple sources. And as we look at the infographic under the next tab for Differentiated Assistance, you'll see that there are many actions, and those are funded through unrestricted general fund as well as restricted title funding and one-time grant funding. This allows us to provide multiple actions and strategies to address the areas of low performance, both academic and non-academic. This work largely led by Dr. Greer, but also in collaboration with our school site principals and our teachers, helped to make up our Differentiated Assistance program. For this program in our current LCAP, the group that is identified as our African-American students, for next year, it will continue to be our African-American students, and we were also identified for our homeless students. So that will be a component that is added in for next year. So this year, you'll just see our African-American students. Next year, I'm working with the team under Dr. Rodriguez. She met with us for a full day of planning, looking at our data, looking at our current systems and working with the Plan Do Study Act of continuous improvement, what we will do to support that student group. So you'll see on here an investment of over $8.9 million. Again, those are from multiple funding sources with 87% spent for the year. In your report, that will be on the second tab, I believe, that's labeled mid-year report. This is the 73-page document. The requirement for the LCAP to include every single metric that's at the lowest performing level for our district meant that there were 259 metrics. So there is a lot of data there. I'm not going to review that data, but it is there for your review. It does reflect the presentation that Dr. Cleveland provided as well. All is available publicly as well on our California dashboard. But you'll see in there the dollars portion, the expenditures, which I just went over, as well as the data piece as well. In there, you'll see for local data, anything that has an asterisk listed next to it means that it's not available to the spring, so it is not included in our mid-year report. It will be included in the annual update for our LCAP. So I don't have it just yet. Anything that has that star next to it. What will be included, though, is any of our California dashboard, and you will also see NWEA, which is our district-wide universal assessment that we take at the elementary, middle, and high school level, the winter administration, which just closed for us. So this is very recent data that's included in there. And then the last piece there, the survey data, that again will be available in the spring. The panorama window is open right now. Students are taking those surveys, and we'll have those results very soon. So for our next steps, we are there in February and moving toward April to August. The tour of our parent advisories continues with RCAC having the next presentation. They will also get the same mid-year information. DLEC will get that information in March as well. And with that, President Sabios, any questions that you might have?
Is that the conclusion of the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Alexander?
Thank you so much for making this digestible first and foremost and for your excellent presentation. I really appreciate you breaking it down and the way you presented it in terms of initial engagement all the way throughout the whole presentation. I had a couple of questions related to when you use multiple sources.
Yes.
Can you explain what does that mean? Because I know you mentioned grants and with the visibility of what's happening in the media. I know it's probably different for us. But can you explain what does that mean in terms of grants? Like, is it federal or state?
Sure. So we receive state funding, the majority of which is Local Control Funding Formula, LCFF. That's the majority of our state funding. There are very small grants or categorical programs, as they are sometimes called, that we have as well. Prop 28 is one of those programs which would support visual and performing arts. We also have very small grants, like under our ETS department, the Anti-Bias Grant. This is a state program, so it's not subject to any conversation about federal grants and DEI. That is a separate, since it is at the state level, it is not a federal grant. Also, at the state level, you have Equity Multiplier, which I reviewed tonight, is a separate funding source from our LCFF, right? At the federal level, we have Title I, which supports our lowest-achieving students in reading, writing, math, and science. That is utilized in our Differentiated Assistance plan. I'm guessing that is what you're referring to with the multiple sources, okay? That is, we use data as our point for identifying need. We're not starting with any other filter. So it's not subject to any concern of conversation currently of federal grants that might be, you know, in harm's way if we're using it for DEI practices. Title II is a program that is meant to build the capacity of our teachers and our principals. You can also use it for recruitment and retention of staff. We primarily use this for our coaching support for our principals and our teachers. Title III is for our English learners. Title III, you receive funding for all of your students that are English learners and separate funding if they are immigrant-status English learners. So there are two separate funding sources for them under Title III. Title IV supports a well-rounded education, and there are three uses for that. So when I'm speaking with a director or I'm working with a need that's been identified, it's almost like a Jeopardy! screen that's in front of me, like, okay, this would be allowable in this state funding source or in this federal funding source. But in our district, it's a priority. We use data as our first filter, right? So... So right now, there are not any state, and I did confirm this with Mr. Komnick today, any state or federal that might be in peril or in danger with our current practices.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Ms. Abalas Grande?
Well, it was a long report, so I may have fallen asleep. But what I can see in here and remember is I don't see, do we have such few mild, moderate, much severe students that we, they don't even, aren't, not even referenced in any of this? I, I don't see them anywhere. Are they hidden, embedded somewhere?
So that's a great question. Any of our students that re- that have an IEP, um whether they participate in mild, moderate, um even home and hospital, mild mod, um RSP or speech, will all be identified under Students with Disabilities. So in that report, you will see that abbreviated as SWD. So any of the metrics in there where you see that student group, SWD, that includes our moderate to severe students.
Well, I didn't, I barely saw it. I don't know. I'm gonna have to go back over it. But you know, it's so broad, uh because mild, moderate students, they learn math. They read. They learn how to read. The, the whole new goal of special ed now is to be wary of putting them into moderate to severe because of behaviors. It's really gotten so where um we're being taught now in special ed, be wary, don't just be such a hurry to um give that label to that child because they, now they no longer will look, work for a diploma. Now they're just going for a certificate of uh completion and uh be at a school such as Anderson or somewhere else. That really curtails their chances of succeeding. And I've been um substitute teaching now for about a year at two different districts. And I'm amazed at how well the mild and moderate students, they don't even use the word special education. They have like three or four different ways of calling, they call them intervention, uh you know, um added something. And I, I just not, I'm not happy that we are just still sticking them in those mild, moderate, moderate, severe, RSP. And it's, it's very, uh, to me, I feel it's demeaning to our, our, our special ed teachers, all our staff that work so hard and on, on behalf of these kids. So when I, I look at reports like this and I, my eyes seek, I look, I, I really, you know, I'm happy about everything we're doing for everything, but I still feel like they're still that invisible child. And I don't know what, what we can do about that. I really don't. I'm still new at this.
So I do, as part of the LCAP, have a consultation with SOPA to make sure what is in our SOPA plan, um which describes what, what programs we offer, the titles of those programs and the funding sources. They have federal funding as well as state funding, um that the LCAP is in alignment with that. So during my consultation, I will make sure to bring this up with them as well so that that can be part of our discussion. Um, I'm not sure, Mrs. Applegate, if she would like to add anything, but I do meet regularly with Dr. Rubio and his new assistant director, uh Ms. York, because it's very important that we're doing our plans in the same direction. They each have a separate purpose, right? Um, but that SOPA plan will describe our services under Attachment Seven. And that is where we would provide the titles such as mild mod, moderate to severe. So I, I have a note taker. Um, so my note taker is making sure to take this down for you. Um, and I will bring that up during my consultation with our SOPA.
And I also might suggest you do a compare and contrast with our surrounding districts. Uh, you're gonna look at the numbers perhaps of the actual enrolled. But you know, to me, all of our children move around. They can be in our district uh one year and another district, another. So I'd be interested in seeing a comparison and contrasting. Honestly, sometimes when I go into a classroom, I feel like undercover boss. I do, I'm sitting there finding things that I feel are strengths there and I think, oh, I wish we did that, you know? There's not, there's not a, a reason not to uh steal each other's great ideas because I know people, other districts, we give them ideas. We're very um inspiring in a lot of areas, but not in this one. And I'm sorry about that.
Okay.
And if I could just clarify too, um, Mrs. Abalas Grande, we are committed to our special education students overall. And if, and if you've noticed in the presentation, the LCAP is about 223 million out of a billion-dollar budget. And we have had, um, we're adding support in the tune, over $70 million to our special education students above and beyond the budget that they get because it's the right thing to do. So we have been very um deliberate about making sure that they're included in many, many of the general ed services that we're doing, um along with the special education. So this is a, this is a budget. I'm not gonna say it's a small budget, but the county, the state does require the three populations that she mentioned. Um, but we continue to be committed to our special education students by providing the extra 70 million and the base program that we provide for them above and beyond special education as well. We've really invested in one-on-ones. I think we have over $7 million this year because we've seen, you know, as you're saying, um, making sure that they're reaching their potential. So this is one budget and we're, we're completely dedicated, so.
One more thing, uh, so are we still one of the um kind, we're still a rarity that we are our own SOPA, correct? All right, so I'm just thinking maybe it's almost like, you know, we're too big and, and is Dr. Rubio, he serves as both the special ed director and the SOPA director, right?
Yes, and he does have two assistant directors for that reason.
He has two assistants, but he does have a huge job. So, so that I understand and he's.
And I'm very proud of our teachers, as you know, with the basics curriculum. We are moving in the direction of making sure that our students are getting the education to fulfill, you know, their potential, so.
That was born, I, I remember. Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Medina?
First of all, thank you for the presentation. I do agree with what uh was mentioned that you do, you, you could tell you were a teacher at one point because it, I, the way you explain it. Uh, if I had any questions, you automatically addressed it right after. So thank you for the way you present as well. Um, I did hear, I couldn't catch the policy number. I, I know that was something that I always hear uh with regards to Target Improvement Plan. And, but, and, and every time I try to look for it, I can't find it. So I, and you did mention the policy number, so can you repeat that again?
And I can, we can make sure, I'll send it to Karen. You can get a copy. We're happy to share it with you.
Yes. All right, perfect. Thank you. Um, because that's something that we, it's important because I know Mr. Tillman and they were the pioneers, um, many groups back then were the pioneers in bringing this forward. So I, I, I just wanted to um look back at it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, and, and then, again, as has already been mentioned, thank you for your wonderful, wonderful presentation. Um, I just really have two uh questions. Um, one of them was the uh regarding the Differentiated Assistance Plan. I know that you said that this year, our African-American student population was the identified uh like target recipients of that. But you said that next year, I think we have identified a new population with, which was our homeless population. How did those uh subgroups um get identified and, and from who? What's the criteria?
Now, that's a great question. This identification is part of the California Department of Education System of Supports. And it is an identification based on the California Dashboard. It happens automatically. So it's not something that we need to analyze in order to make sure that it happens. It happens automatically if you have a student group over consecutive years that is performing at the lowest level. So we have African-American students is our current one, as you stated. Um, it is for English, language arts, math, and chronic absenteeism. We are adding homeless in the exact same areas.
Got it.
So you'll see a Differentiated Assistance Goal for our African-American students that will continue and we will be adding in that second one. So we will go from 21 goals to 22 goals.
And the Equity Multiplier Plan, is that more or less similar, similarly identified?
Yes, so these are state identifications as well. They're not district-selected schools. You do need to meet those two pieces of criteria in order to be selected as a school. Um, again, the socio-economically disadvantage, also referred to as low income, um, and then non-stability rate, the movement of your students. So they look at how many students did you have from the first day of school through the last day of school? As principal of Newmark, my average enrollment was around 415, 430. But if I took into account every student that had been enrolled at least one day, it would be much higher, maybe around 500 students. I didn't have 500 students all the time because some may have just been there for a very short amount of time.
Got it. Okay, perfect. And then the last question, I think it's more from Ms. um Applegate. Um, are we scheduled to have a uh presentation from um Dr. Rubio and his department anytime soon?
The special education presentation? We can absolutely do that. We can put it on the, we can calendar it if that's something that the board would like.
Yeah, that's it. Thank you so much. I'm so sorry. Um, 8.0 Board Discussion, 8.1 California State um University San Bernardino Alumni Ha- Hall of Fame Sponsorship. uh, yes, so that was Ms. Abalas Grande. Did you wanna discuss?
Yeah, I guess it was, wasn't it? Okay. Well, I um, I was up there on another project and we were talking with um uh Robert Nava, Dr. Nava. And um, he did tell me, we had a long talk and then of course it was Mauricio. He won, uh, he, he was been nominated, uh, well, he's a recipient of the Watson College of Education Coyote Paw Award, which uh recognizes exceptional achievements, leadership, and lasting contributions to education and our community. So they had, they had sent the information to Karen and I asked her to, to bring it up so we can discuss that. And um, I, I think, I believe in the past, we have done the 5,000 for this, for this. Um, does anyone remember? Karen, have we done this before for this? We have not?
I don't believe so. If we did, it's been a while ago.
It's been a while ago. Okay, so um, it is, it includes eight seats, so eight tickets and uh all of that. So I just wanted to throw that out there. If anyone had any ideas.
Are you done?
I'm done. Mr. Tillman?
So what do they do? How do they benefit um the district? Does this program actually do something with our students? Because I know part of the qualifying thing is if we do the contribution, the.
I frankly, um, I can ask Robert to give me a list of things that they do uh with our students or for our students. I know they, possibly they provide this, a space for us uh at times over the years. I know that we've had, uh, we just had this humongous literacy fair there, but I don't know, you know, we paid for it or we got a break on, on the venue or any, anything like that. I can find out.
I'm just saying if it's the Alumni Hall of Fame, somehow that part of it has to benefit our students.
Sure, sure. No, I, I can, I can check with them. I need to, you know, have something. That's why I put it up, discussion. I'm, I'm new at this part.
Ms. Medina? Question would be then, can we uh move this for maybe the next board meeting? So once you have more information, so that way uh we can tie it back to what are they providing for our students out of this? Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
That, that was gonna be my question, if there was a deadline by which this needed to be submitted by. Um, because if it does have a deadline and it's before our next board meeting, um, I don't know if we can have that. Okay.
Uh, it'd just take a minute to write him a email and say, um, give me a list of all the things you've done for our children.
Because, because if, if it was before, I was gonna bring up the retro. Um, so I don't know how we have to, how we should move forward with it. Um, if it's before or after. But I would be interested to learn more about how it directly benefits the students. That's it?
Okay, that's it.
All right, next um item is 8.2 San Bernardino Symphony Orchestra's Music at the Foot of the Mountains Gala Sponsorship. And this was brought up by uh, for by Superintendent Ariano.
Yeah, thank you. I, I brought it forth because I know Dr. Wyatt in the past had talked about um the support uh for the symphony. So I don't know, Scott, I just brought it to the board's attention and see if that's something that the, you wanted to ask for support. I know you've asked about the Fourth of July event and providing sponsorship first. Children, just wanted to make sure that the board didn't miss this opportunity. Maybe it's not something we would want to do, but I wanted to put it on there.
Oh, first of all, thank you Superintendent Ariano. I'd have to look at this one as well, a little bit more. You know, my goal is hopefully to, like you said, support the Fourth of July event and, you know, have more of our students and their families attend as some sort of incentive. I know we talked about that. This one here, um, I guess I'd have to look a little bit more at the, the invitation and the sponsorship. I mean, I'm all for sponsoring the symphony. You know, I think they do a lot for our students here and it also is a great pathway for them possibly to get into, um, wonderful event. But again, I'm not as familiar with this. I mean, I would love for us to sponsor it, but my primary goal was the Fourth of July event. Yeah, I mean, if the board is more than happy to support them here as well, I, I would be in agreement with it. But I just want to make sure the primary focus for me was Fourth of July. Thank you.
So are we bringing this one back as well? Oh, sorry, um, Ms. Alexander?
I would just like to further comment. The symphony supports our students. So we heard today that the students that received recognition and the families, they receive a ticket to the symphony. And this is their annual gala in which a portion of the proceeds will support us or some way or another. Um, so I think, I mean, we have information here. We have evidence that they support our school district. And um, I would say that we should consider a sponsorship. Um, it seems like the baseline we're saying 5,000. However, um, I'm open to a number. I could just put a number out there. If we do eight tickets for the gala, that's a, that's a table and that is 5,000. So I'll just, I'll motion that we approve $5,000 sponsorship for the, the gala, for the symphony, San Bernardino Symphony.
And I, I would second that now, knowing that this is their annual uh gala. Then I would definitely support that. Thank you, Ms. Alexander.
And I just have one quick question um in regards to, um, because I heard you say something about the Fourth of July. Is that an additional sponsorship? Um, like a opportunity or, or?
Yes, President Savios, I presented that um last year, actually probably after the Fourth of July just because I know I attended the event and thought it would be a wonderful opportunity. That's later on in the year, obviously. Um, and again, that's why I said that would be my, my primary request. But this one here, I would support absolutely, knowing that it's their annual gala fundraiser, so.
Okay, um, so I have a motion from Ms. Alexander and then I have a second from um Dr. Wyatt. Mr. Tillman?
Oh, the, the, just so clear, is, is, is the donation to the same organization? And is it uh, or is the One of July something more specific about funding kids?
A please.
Yes, Superintendent Ariano.
So I believe, I don't want to speak for Dr. Wyatt, but I guess I am speaking for Dr. Wyatt. I believe Dr. Wyatt's request in July was for the board to consider for the upcoming July event, that the board would purchase tickets for the students to attend the event. This event is their fundraising event, the gala, so two different requests. This is to support the gala. I believe Dr. Wyatt's request is to buy tickets for kids to participate and watch the event in July, correct?
And I, I think that the discussion, actually I know the discussion was to create as an incentive for students, however that may be at their schools. Like PBIS or attendance incentive or something along those lines.
I just bring it up because I think if it is a sponsorship and it's gonna be, end up being $10,000, the, the caution I have is, you know, other organizations are watching and uh taxpayers are watching too. And when you get past the $5,000 contribution thing, then I just get kind of concerned about making sure that we're not, you know, and I, now for instance, I'd have no problem supporting this. And then we come to the July one, and I'm sure they're gonna send out a whole new sponsorship. But if we change it, where you're just gonna do it to allow kids to attend, that's, I'm, I'm for that. But what I don't want to do is say, okay, we're gonna have the kids attend and they could uh attend for 50 bucks a piece. We're gonna do 10 kids, it'd be $500. But rather than do that, we're going to do a $5,000 sponsorship beginning of July. I think that'd be too much.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman, for that. And that was the reason of the question that I was trying to ask. Ms. Alexander?
As I've attended the Fourth of July for the, ever since it started, that event, I've never seen a sponsorship package. It's been tickets. So I think just point of clarification, I think the proposal for Fourth of July was to sponsor students to attend or to purchase tickets. But I don't recall seeing a sponsorship package, whereas this is their annual gala, which is documented in terms of where the money will go, the proceeds.
Perfect. Alrighty, so we have a motion from Ms. Alexander and then we have a second from Dr. Wyatt. We move to vote? And just to be clear, it's a $5,000 sponsorship that we're voting on? Motion passes. 9.0 Action Items, 9.1 Personnel Report.
As presented. Move.
Second. By Mr. Tillman, second by Ms. Medina. Vote, please. Motion passes. 9.2 Approval of the 2025 Comprehensive School Safety Plans. Can I get a motion?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Ms. Alexander. Vote, please. Motion passes. 10.0 Consent Items, 10.1 Approval of Consent List.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Ms. Medina. Does anybody have any items to pull? Vote, please. Motion passes. 11.0 Reports, Comments by Unit Organizations, 11.1 San Bernardino Teachers Association.
No report.
11.2 California School Employees Association.
No report.
11.3 Communication Workers of America.
No report.
11.4 San Bernardino School Police Officers Association.
No report.
12.0 Reports and Comments, 12.1 Board Members. And I'm going to go ahead and start with Ms. Alexander.
Thank you. I wanted to say, do a special shout out to our police chief to my right, Chief Folino and his staff, Eric Vettier and his team. In reference to, you know, these past couple of weeks, we, and the cabinet, and also the teachers and staff that were basically holding down the fort in terms of just the students, the walkouts, and just making sure that everyone stayed safe. And also just to report out, Mr. Ariano, the superintendent, just for providing us with those reports, we really appreciate it. And the intentionality of just keeping us abreast of what's happening. And then I wanted to just also give a special shout out to our superintendent for his award that he was receiving from ACSA, as was to Dr. Keisha Handy and Dr. Amy Coker. Congratulations to all three of you and, you know, keep making us shine. Really appreciate that. And then just a couple items in reference to our review for LCAB. I just wanted to revisit, and it's a request, and just in terms of just our budget. You know, with all the media and the press related to what's happening with the focus on DEI, I recognize that for us, we're well positioned probably compared to many other districts. And very well in terms of our general fund and how we source our programs. But I think it's important for us just to make sure that we look at any of our programs that have DEI in it or perceived to support those efforts from a grant perspective, just to see, just do a deep dive on what are those grants? And even if they're state funded, making sure that there's no federal attachment to it from the state level. So if we can get a report, sharing that information, I would appreciate it. And that's it. Oh, I have a couple announcements. The Spelling Bee that's happening this Saturday, Delta Phi Kappa, I believe is the sorority, the African-American Spelling Bee. I will be attending that and hopefully they will have a good representation. And then the Mom Mob is February 28th and that will be at Kim Mark. That's it. That's the Black History Bee? Oh, sorry, thank you. Black History Bee. Thank you.
And you said Mom Mob, February 28th at Kim Mark at 8:00?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Rosales, Medina?
Yes, as I hear with Ms. Felicia Alexander, with regards to, you know, the many great things she mentioned, even the, where we're at as a school district. I kind of reflect on how blessed I am to be part of a working team here in the district. I know it's been almost 12 years. And to see where we're at, I see other school districts where now they're looking at how many teachers they have to let go. They're looking at huge budget cuts and, and, and just being at risk at several, in several, you know, line items and so forth. I think we are in a great position and I'm just really glad to be part of this. And we have really good board members, a superintendent. And even recently with the, with the issues of the fires, with the issues with the storms. I want to say also kudos to Eric Vettier for the type of information he's also providing us and making sure that our families through social media are aware of what's coming and how to prepare. So I also want to say thank you to him and his team for all the work that he's doing. So anyway, those are just a few things and I'm really grateful of being here and part of the district.
Thank you. Mr. Tillman? Thank you, Ms. Mary Ellen Grande. Mr. Santos?
You can go first. Go. Yep, you.
To be sure, just wanted to say thank you to the superintendent for the updates on the students as someone who believes in the right to protest civil disobedience as long as... So I think the students learned something from that experience, hopefully. And anyways, I just, I just think it's important for students to learn that part and participate in something. So, and keeping them safe and, you know, your updates were wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Madam President. I think pretty much my colleagues said everything I was going to say. And just again, I want to give a shout out to Superintendent Ariano for being selected Superintendent of the Year for AXA in our region and as well as our colleagues as well. Pretty exciting. We have three folks from San Diego City Unified School District representing us well. So, great job to all of them. And yeah, I want to echo as well on the safety that our staff provided as well as the guidance for our students to, you know, protest peacefully. We have literally thousands of students and people were contacting me and asking, "Hey, what's happening in your district?" I said, "Well, you know, they're exercising their First Amendment rights and they're doing it in a very respectful manner, very professional manner." And a lot of that had to do with our safety personnel as well as San Diego City PD. I know they assisted too. So, you know, I want to say thank you to them. I met with Darren Goodman last week, Chief Goodman, and I wanted to give him a lot of compliments on what he's doing with the department and creating a safer environment for our city. I think it's important that we recognize that and the partners that we're working with. Tended Kim Knoss's public swearing-in ceremony for her city councilwoman. And that was pretty exciting because the big thing that I emphasized there is our partnerships with everyone. Cal State San Bernardino, our local PD, the different unions that we're working with on the CWA, which I think is amazing, we're there. But it's just a testament of, I think, where the city's going. And I've always said that I believe San Diego City Unified School District is the catalyst for change and we have been. And I continue to push the city to work with us. I know Superintendent Ariano's been there and many of us sitting right here at the dais have been working with them. And I truly believe that, you know, it's a turning point for us right now. And I'm excited about our future. I'm looking forward to it. And I know everybody on this dais is ready to make things happen because we continue to make things happen. But I want to see it even on a larger scale for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. Ms. Abalas Grande?
I too was very, very proud of our response, particular Mr. Ariano's response. We knew just like every 15, 20 minutes, we had an update on the kids. And I really appreciate that because, to be honest, I was afraid. I was very uneasy all week and I think I even cried remembering, you know, when I was that age, we were demonstrated against the Vietnam War. And our college students at college, at Kent State, when they did that, they called the National Guard out and as you know, they were shot and killed. I mean, it was, I'm sure by accident. I'm sure they didn't mean to. I really can't believe that. But accidents happen and I was very grateful for those updates. I didn't much stay off my phone. I was pretty much on my phone all those days. And just when I thought it was over, then there was even more. So thank you, thank you, thank you for that. And it was a sigh of relief. And talking about partnerships, I think that started with partnership with the city was so cool that time we went to go visit them all and they've never forgotten, you know. Mario, Florida's and Treasure Ortiz have reached out to me and I've given them ideas and they're excited about making a difference. And it's good to hear that. And I saw they came here and they even, I think they brought the mayor out. I don't know if she brought them. I think they brought her out. Said, "You have to come see because we're a lot, we're a good team." You know, I'm very proud of our partnerships. And I'm remembering at one time, we had a collaboration of the Golden Apple Awards. Were all held, Cal State, San Bernardino, the city, and San Bernardino Valley College in our district. And they had that all in one and all of the organizations were there and we really hobnobbed. I don't know if you recall, it was at the Hilton Inn. So maybe that's something we could look at doing again in the future, you know, throwing that out there. It was very expensive though, I remember. Also, I would like to, I would like to ask Karen if she could send me the language for our criteria for sponsorships. So I want to be straight on when I talk to Dr. Nava about, you know, what our regulations are, our rules. And I would also like to know, you know, no hurry on this, Dr. Applegate, but I would like to know the numbers, how many mild, moderate students we have, how many moderate to severe, how many home and hospital, and how many special education teachers we have. No hurry on the numbers, all right? Thank you. That's all.
Thank you so much, Ms. Abalas Grande. And just also really quickly, again, it's, as it has already been mentioned, I was also very, very appreciative and positively just, I don't want to say surprised because it's not like I expected anything less than our team, from our team. But I was very impressed in a positive way at the promptness and communication, not only from the superintendent to us, obviously, but in order for him to be able to provide that information to us means that somebody was, you know, being proactive and providing him with that prompt information. And I didn't receive any negative comments, calls, texts, none of that. On the contrary, I think that, I was also myself a little concerned because it could be a recipe for disaster in some cases. Let's just be honest, right? And it was very, very, very well handled. And like I said, I was very appreciative and thankful and just impressed, not only at our district staff, but also our kids, right? Really just following along and we were getting messages from Superintendent Ariano telling us that, you know, they had left, but they were walking in a straight line down the sidewalk. So just to hear things like this, that we can still exercise our right and we can still teach them that this is important, but also do it in a way where it's respectable, whereas, you know, honorable, I think is really important as well. No yards were damaged, none of that. So, you know, thank you to everyone, the administrators out there who, you know, put on their walking shoes and went out and accompanied our students, our, as has already been mentioned, our chief and his staff or, you know, security officers. Everybody, everybody that really just put, you know, their, was out there supporting. Congratulations again to Mr. Ariano as well as Dr. Coker and Dr. Handy on their recognition. And I think that's it, actually. Yep. I'm going to say yes. Mr. Ariano?
President Savios, first of all, I just want to thank Dr. Punches for his presentation today and the collaboration work that you're doing with Cal State San Bernardino to help enhance our teaching course. I appreciate the effort. I know, serving as the Assistant Superintendent of HR for 14 years, HR is usually the thankless department, right? But a lot of good stuff's going on behind the scenes. So, Dr. Punches, thank you for making those connections. And Anna, thank you and to Kimber for an excellent LCAB report. You know, she, like was said, she just does a nice job of making something so complex very easy. So please pass on my thanks to Kimber. I just want to share with the board and the community, I know there's been a lot of conversation about some of the decisions that are being made regarding the Federal Department of Education. I know it's been mentioned a couple of times here today, but at this point, there was a memo, a memo that was sent out on Friday to all public education agencies that provided a list of do's and don'ts and with a 14-day enforcement rule based on that memo. So that memo went out on Friday. We are waiting and in calling the California Department of Education, we know that there's going to be some guidance provided by Attorney General Rob Bonta as well as State Superintendent Thurmond. So we will await to see their analysis of how and if that affects public education. But for now, in terms of San Diego City Unified School District, we're at status quo. All programs, all service deliveries, all events, at this point, I don't see any reason that we're in violation of any mandate or any reason to change. So that's the update as of now. And if I hear anything different, certainly I will share with the board. And then I also want to, again, share with our parents and our community and with the board and just rehash a little bit about our immigration enforcement policy and reassure everyone in the community that we are following all rules, all laws, and all board policies related to potential immigration enforcement. I want to remind the community because many parents have been still calling and asking, "What is the board doing? What is the district doing?" So just in general, wanted to remind the community that the board did pass a resolution, once again reaffirming their stance from 2017, that we embrace and celebrate the diversity in our district, that schools are a safe place to learn, that all preschool to 12th grade age students are welcome to San Diego City Unified School District without any condition or reservation, and that we do have a board policy, 514513, that specifically mirrors the California Values Act, which is the law that governs immigration enforcement in the state of California. So we do follow Education Code 237.7, which gives children's right to a free and public education regardless of immigration status or religious belief. That is the law. We follow Ed Code 237.4, which states that the Attorney General must publish and model policies that school district must then emulate a board policy. policies that school district must then emulate a board policy to follow. And I want to reassure the community that our board policy mirrors exactly what is in the Ed Code. I also want to make our community feel secure that we have reviewed the board policy, not only as a cabinet, but with our site administrators, with our site office staff, with our campus security officers, and we've asked principals to go through that board policy in detail, so that if they have any questions or they have any occurrences, they would know how to react. We also, in working with our union presidents, and I thank them both, we were asked to send the board policy out to all of our staff members, so they would at least know what the policy is, and of course, if they have any questions or need guidance, they could speak to our principals or assistant principals. I do invite our community members and our families to look at our board policy. The board policy very clearly outlines what the do's and don'ts are if something should happen at one of our campuses. It tells the policy, it tells our principal exactly what to ask for, what to look for, what to do and what not to do, but all in all is, our job is to follow the law. And so I just want to reassure the families that we are following that law. We're very proud that we did put together two parent forums that were well attended, not only in person but via Zoom, where we had members from the Inland Coalition for Immigrant Justice, the San Bernardino Community Service Center, which is DOJ-certified organization, we had immigration lawyers and representatives from the different consulates here to answer questions, because school districts, we are not equipped to provide legal advice on these topics. So those two forums were very well received, and the message has been that the district will follow board policy and state law. We are getting some request board from some of our community groups to perhaps have a representative of district just talk about our policy, so we're certainly happy to do that, as long as we're just talking about policy. We can't get into giving legal advice, so we're making ourselves available to any organization that may want us to be there. So just wanted to share that about our immigration enforcement policy. Then to the student walkouts, and I'll get to the kudos here in a minute, but I know I've been receiving a lot of calls from parents who believe that perhaps because we're monitoring and supervising the students as they walk out, that we are endorsing or encouraging the walkouts. So I want to be clear that the walkouts are not sponsored or sanctioned by the school district. However, we very much recognize the students' First Amendment rights that were upheld by the 1969 case of Tinker versus Des Moines, and then upheld two times later in the case of Hazelwood versus Colmeyer and Morris versus Frederick, which allows students the opportunity to be engaged in First Amendment activities. As a matter of fact, in the state of California, Ed Code 48205, Section A, Subsection 12, allows students one excused absence a year to be involved in exercises that relate to the First Amendment activity. On top of that, it is our job to safely monitor our kids when they do a walkout, and I'll give kudos here in a minute, but I want our community to know that when the kids walk out, our job is to make sure as best as possible that the kids are safe wherever they go. Now, having said that, I know that there are social media postings, I know one has been posted for San Gregonio High School students tomorrow, which have already had a walkout from last year, but I want to remind the parents to really help us with that, because even though we will provide the monitor and supervising, it becomes very hard to guarantee safety once the kids are beyond the perimeter of our school sites, because of all the things that we cannot predict, meaning adults out in the community, any people out there that may be wanting to start trouble, antagonizers. So we ask our parents to please talk to their children, and to let them know that we are providing other opportunities for our students on campus, which I'll get to here in a minute, where students can have their voice heard. So we are teaching our students different ways other than walkouts to have their voices heard, but we do ask our parents to please sit down with their students and talk about the safety that could or could not happen once kids leave the campus, but I am also very proud of the work that we have done to keep our kids safe. And so with that, I'm going to jump into, starting off by giving Eric Vettier a huge thank you. He was running the EOC, the Emergency Command Center, and I was sitting next to him, and that's how we were able to provide the Board of Education at-the-moment information. And this gentleman does a great job working with Chief Paulino, with the city police department, coordinating all the moves that we need. He already had teams assigned to each one of the school sites, so that if students walked out, personnel on the campus didn't necessarily leave with the team, because we still have school to operate, we had teams showing up, plus we had school police officers from Chief's team and the Samaria City Police as well. So, great job to Eric managing that Emergency Command Center, but it was a team effort. I thank Cabinet for being in the room with me there as we were making decisions. I thank the principals for walking with the kids, the teachers, the support staff, everybody pitched in to make sure that our kids got back safe and sound after exercising their First Amendment rights. So Eric, I just want to say thank you for all your leadership and support. Chief, thank you for your role in this. Everything went smooth, and I appreciate that, because a million and one things could go wrong if we weren't prepared, and they didn't, so thank you to the whole team. Next slide? And I got to give Toby Bushy a big kudos, too. This is a guy you probably don't know, but this man spends hours after work, as example, preparing for the parades, all the logistics for the parades, all the logistics for all the night events that happen, all the logistics on the weekends that happen at our school sites. This is the man that's making it happen, and he is such a humble person that I'm sure if he's looking at this, he's mortified that I'm even giving him kudos. But hey, when people deserve the kudos, you know, they're going to get it. So Toby, I just want to say thank you for your role in making all of our events happen very smoothly, because they have gone well. So Toby, we all thank you. Next slide? And back to our First Amendment rights of students, I want to thank the high school and middle school principals, who, not only for their participation in keeping kids safe, but in rising to the occasion, you know, I had a conversation with Mr. Tillman on one of those days, and he said to me, hey, Marissa, you know, do we talk to kids about other ways of student voice, you know? And I said, you know, I don't know if we do, but let's make sure that they do. And so I had an opportunity to meet with the high school and middle school principals, and we talked about challenging them, what are other opportunities our students can do other than walking out to have their voice heard, to meet our multi-year vision that says we want kids civically engaged? And so to their credit, they met on Monday, the holiday, as a group, and they put together a list of other ways that kids can have their voice heard. And so now kids know that on campus, they can do other things. They can write letters to the elected officials, they can wear t-shirts or some sort of symbol as a silent protest to something. Some of our principals have provided spaces at lunchtime with a microphone and speakers, a controlled space, where students can go up and have these conversations or rallies on campus. They're creating poetry and spoken word opportunities so that kids can voice their concern. So I want to share with the board that we are teaching our kids all the different examples of how they can be engaged, other than something that might be a little unsafe leaving campus. So thank you for that suggestion, Mr. Tillman, and I know for a few of you, we've talked about it as well, but that is part of our multi-year vision, so kudos to the middle school and high school principals for providing those opportunities. Next slide? And big thank you to Anna Applegate and Tony Woods, and, you know, everybody in, you know, Kimberly Simpson and Ed Services. It was a rainy night, our parents showing up wasn't as robust as has been in the past, but I just want to thank you for providing these opportunities for parents to come to learn not only about the support mechanisms that we have, but also how to teach parents to do and have literacy opportunities at home. And so Anna, thank you and your team. It was a great event, they had a DJ, they had food for the families and the kids, and everybody from the different departments was there, ready to provide opportunities and strategies to parents. So thank you, Anna, great event. Next slide? And I just want to end today by congratulating two of our great colleagues who are being recognized by the Association of California School Administrators, Region 12, which is all of Samaria County. And so Keisha has won the Dr. Margaret Hill Social Justice Award for her work, so congratulations, Dr. Handy, for all the work that you do. And next slide? Dr. Amy Coker has won the Curriculum Instruction Administrator of the Year Award. So this award here, she will now compete at the state level against the winners of the different, there's 19 regions in California to pick a state winner. So we have two outstanding colleagues who are winning awards, being recognized for the work, and now may win a state award, so congratulations to Keisha and to Amy. Next slide? And want to thank Ashley and Barbara for the invitation to their CTA dinner in Moreno Valley. You see that Felicia, Scott, and Myra, we attended on their invitation. And what I was proud about this picture, why I want to share this picture is, they had all the different districts that were there with their newly-elected board members, but we were the only one, only had the superintendent there. In other words, the team. And I just valued that, that we could be there as a team, have other school districts see us together in that moment. To me, it was just special, so thank you to Ashley and Barbara, and thank you to the board members who could attend that night. It was very nice to be recognized by others that we were all there as a team, so thank you to Barbara and Ashley for thinking to invite us. And the last slide, please. Kudos to Dr. Wyatt and Francine Bichard for their involvement in CAPL, which is the California Association of Asian and Pacific Leaders in Education. I know Scott and Francine gave a presentation as part of the conference, and I know Scott has challenged us next year to be even more involved by inviting parents, having students participate and do presentations, and perhaps even do a presentation, one of the presentations, but I know you want to do some performances, et cetera. So thank you, Scott, for not only representing the district, but, you know, getting us out there. We're the leaders in many departments, and here's another example of Samaria Unified being out front. Scott, I know you want to say a few words?
Well, thank you, Superintendent Ariano, and definitely thank you to the team, but, you know, myself and Francine, we were able to present and moderate, but I really want to give kudos to the panel. We had a parent panel, and, you know, half of that panel was also our employees, which was interesting, not only just employees, but also parents, and it was the only parent panel that was there at the conference, and their testimony and their journey to form PIA is quite the story and testament. So I had a number of districts come up and talk to us after on the process, and how we can help them come along and do the same thing, which I think is great, and they also wanted to purchase some of our shirts, so I thought that was pretty cool.
That's all for tonight. Thank you, President Savaios.
Wow, thank you, thank you for all of that. 13.0 summary of board members' requests, 13.1 review of requests?
Good evening. The first request is from Mrs. Alexander. She's requesting for a report for funded DEI programs by title and funding source. The next request is from Mrs. Grande. She's requesting the language for criteria for sponsorships. And the last request is also from Mrs. Grande. She's requesting the numbers for special education students, specifically the number of mild to moderate and moderate to severe students, as well as the number of special teachers. Mrs. Applegate will be providing that information. Thank you.
Then I had requested to include a special education presentation. 14.0 meeting adjournment?
A move.
Second by, second.
Move by Dr. Wyatt, second by Mr. Santos. Meeting adjourned.